Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first, actually our second city council meeting of the 2020 season here. I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with state open meeting law. I'd like to start with a flag salute in the moment of silence. Councilor O'Hara, would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please? Madam Clerk, can we please call the First Order of Business?
First Order of Business is Oral Communications.
Yes, the mayor would like to address the council briefly.
Well, good evening, everyone. What I wanted to do is come and say again, congratulations on your reelection. I know it's your second meeting, but I wanted to welcome Council McCarthy and Council Pet to our new city council and to remind everyone that we are here working together and we can continue to make us move forward. And as Peter Anastas, our good friend, a moment of silence wasn't said, but that's okay, I'll say a few words. Every human has a right. Every human deserves to live. Every human deserves to be heard, and every hearing human deserves to have respect. Thank you, Peter Anastas. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular scheduled meeting to be heard under the oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the city council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks period relative to the disposition of same and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual's performance. Is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? Yes, come right up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue, East Gloucester. Chair of Blank, new city councilors, full council. Happy New Year. I am here before you to request, number one, a formal public hearing on the possible Gloucester Public School District's consolidations. And number two, that this public hearing be scheduled before any vote by the city council pertaining to the possible East Gloucester Veterans consolidation land in reference to these two properties, the possible regionalization with Rockport, and the future of Beeman and Plum Cove schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anybody else? Name and record for the, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Ammaral. Oh, Happy New Year. This is a letter that Reginald Santos, Joseph S. Meadows nephew wrote, and I'm going to read it for him. "In defense of Joseph S. Meadows Memorial Field." Joseph S. Meadows, excuse me, I'm short, was my brother's older brother. Although she was only 11 years old when he was killed near Exmont during the Battle for the Muse Argon Forest in 1918 during the First War War, War I, she passed on to me many memories of her childhood and her brother. But more than that, she passed on a tremendous respect for her brother and the sacrifice he made for his country. That respect has helped me to guide me through my service in the United States Marine Corps and during my entire life. Early in our married life, we lived on Friend Street, and I took great pride in showing my young son, just starting in the first grade at veterans school, the ball field and a memorial plaque dedicated to his great uncle. Meadows Field was originally dedicated in 1935 and serves not only as a memorial to Joseph's sacrifice, but as a tribute to the sacrifice of the entire Meadows family and the dedication and patriotism of Gloucestershore Portuguese community. This sacrifice and the sacrifice of the Meadows family is what is memorialized in Meadows Field on Webster Street, just a stone's throw from his family's home on Lele Place. It is most fitting that his memorial should be in a neighborhood where he grew up, in the heart of Gloucestershore Portuguese community. In the early 50s, when they were planning to build what is now known as a Veterans Memorial School, there was a strong sentiment to name it the Joseph S. Memorial School because they were taking a large part of his memorial field. However, veterans groups prevailed and the school received its present name honoring all veterans. My uncle Joseph never became a veteran. He did not live to receive that honor. Now they want to build a new school and a much larger school, taking what little remains of Meadows Field to build on, even though this site is the most expensive by far of all the options available. I feel it would be doing a great disservice to the memory of Joseph S. Meadows, the Meadows family, and to the Gloucestershore Portuguese community to take this small piece of Gloucester when other sites would be more suitable for this enlarged school. Surely, for the $5 million difference over the next most suitable site, a better, more suitable piece of land could be purchased, saving this dedicated bit of open space for the enjoyment of the citizens of Gloucester. Yes, the education of our children is important. One important part of that education is to teach them to respect our country, traditions, and the people who sacrificed everything to ensure these children have the right to that education. Reginald B. Santos, Joseph Meadows nephew. Thank you very much. Have a great year.
Thank you, Patty.
For Joseph.
Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Yes, sir, come right up. Name and address for the record, please.
Reverend Richard Emanuel, 149 153 East Main Street. On November 10th, I requested at the oral communications that a new requirement be issued for the, um, getting a special counsel permit for major projects, that a 3D white model would be required so that the community, the council, and the various boards could understand the scale and dimensions of changes that such large projects bring to this community. I have the copy of the letter. Here it is, January 13th, and I have received no response to this letter, so I'll submit it again.
All right. Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll get your response. Is there anybody else for oral communications? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, city councilors. Mary Lou Tierney, 5 Hesper Circle. Happy New Year. Welcome, new city councilors. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you in advance for the two years of service that you are about to give to our citizens in our city. I'd also like to share with you that I'm a new chief operating officer for a company called Busting Breast Cancer, where I will be involved with trying to change, um, uh, rules and regulations at the FDA level for the benefit of patients with cancer. And I want to thank those of you that I worked with last year to help me understand better the processes in government, and I appreciate how we've gotten to know each other, and I look forward to us working together as unified citizens of a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. That's awesome. If there's anything that the city council can do, please feel free to ask. Thank you. Is there anybody else for oral communications? Seeing none, um, the, we'll have the, um, Madam Clerk call the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
John, Councilor Nolan.
For confirmation of new appointments, we have the Human Rights Commission on a motion by Council Blank, seconded by Council Gilman. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Amanda Kesterson to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire February 14th, 2023.
Amanda, would you like to say something?
Good evening, city council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Amanda Orlando Kesterson. I live at 41 Mount Vernon Street in Gloucester, and I want to address directly with you tonight all of the controversy that has surrounded my appointment. I first want to thank Mayor Taken and her staff for interviewing me, for nominating me to this appointment. I want to thank the Ordinance and Administration Subcommittee for unanimously approving me for your consideration. And lastly, and most importantly, I want to thank the many citizens of Gloucester who wrote letters of support regarding me to the council on my behalf. I volunteered for this appointment when I first read about it in the Gloucester Times last March. I was excited that this was, that there was going to be a group like this, and I wanted to be part of it. Mostly, I felt it was a good fit because I'm a mom of three little boys, and our city government has very little representation from parents of school-aged children. Above all other groups, children need the most advocacy. They live in dire circumstances, in dangerous times, and without anyone to speak for them. And too often, adults and their agendas dominate their lives without thinking of the damage that they're doing. So if there were going to be a Human Rights Commission in Gloucester, I thought having a parent of school-aged children and one who takes an active role in children's advocacy would be necessary and helpful. And I also believed that conservatives needed a strong voice on this commission and that it was important that it be diverse. If all the members on it thought the same about every single issue that came before us, then the "all" would not be represented, and the group would essentially be meaningless. One of my political idols, Ronald Reagan, said, "My 80% friend is not my 20% enemy." And I agree with that philosophy, and I believe it applies to the Human Rights Commission. The members on it are likely to have much more in common with me than we do that which divides us, but we can work together productively through those disagreements towards compromise, all of us putting the best interest of Gloucester citizens at heart. Sadly, since putting my name forward to volunteer for this commission, I've been accused of being insensitive to the Jewish community, that I want to starve children, that I support keeping children in cages, that I'm anti-LGBTQ issues, and a host of other things that I probably aren't even aware of because I wasn't copied on all of the emails. As I read each email that I did receive, I was amazed that people, most of whom have never met me, would have such a harsh assessment of me, and further, reading them seemed like I was reading about a different person entirely. So tonight, because it's very important that the record be clear, I'm going to address each point that I'm aware of and put it out there for all of you. The only objection offered to my appointment, which bore any resemblance to my actual record, was the discussion of the school universal breakfast program at Beeman School, a narrative that by this point has been spun for seven years by the liberal left in this city and has been so distorted and is so far afield from facts that it bears absolutely no relation to my actual opinion on the topic. Seven years ago, in the summer before my son Sam, who's now 12, entered kindergarten, I attended the orientation at Beeman School where he was slated to go, and it was announced that the class would be part of a pilot program to give all students breakfast during the school day for 20 minutes. And several parents in the room objected. Some felt the school would be acting as a nanny state, the kids were gonna be given unhealthy food, the classrooms would be dirty, there'd be lack of time on learning. There was a public hearing, 15 to 20 parents spoke in opposition, I was one of them. My feeling was, education is what we need to lift children out of poverty. They need as much of it as we can possibly give them. And at the time, Beeman was ranked four out of five for elementary schools in Gloucester, and that state mandated class time needed to be met. So the school committee, heeding the objections of many of the parents, rather than find compromises which we offered, like change the bus schedule, get them there early so they can eat breakfast, add 15 minutes to the end of the school day to account for the difference, let's come up with something else. They just decided, no, we'll keep it as it is. There is still a free breakfast program at Beeman, anyone who needs it can have it, and any kids who show up late can get fed individually. Not one child was deprived of food. The suggestion that I was trying to starve children is just wrong, and anyone who knows me, and all of you up there do, should know. It's all too ludicrous. You've been asked to vote no on my appointment because of relationships I have with other people in the political world, or because of behaviors of other people. When the secretary of the Gloucester Republican City Committee shared a meme on Facebook with a picture of Auschwitz on it, there was a backlash. To his credit, we discussed it, we removed the meme, he apologized, both in the newspaper and directly to Rabbi Lewis. I was quoted in the newspaper as well, and I explained that it was never intended to hurt anyone, but that I did understand why it was so offensive. Here is my quote from the Gloucester Times. "Kesterson, who was also a chairwoman of the Gloucester City Republican Committee, said she understands that any post comparing any event to the Holocaust would be disturbing. Neither the local or national GOP stand for hate speech," she added. I went on to discuss that the Republican Party was created in opposition to slavery, individual liberty is one of our core principles, and the last thing anyone on our committee intended to do was hurt anyone. By that point, I assumed it was concluded to everyone's satisfaction, but two and a half years later, it reared up again in opposition to my appointment to the Human Rights Commission. And even though everybody agrees, I did not commit the offense, I am being asked to answer for it. However, since it's a religion which promotes forgiveness, I'm hopeful that when I meet with Rabbi Lewis on Friday, we can address the issue together and move forward. I support President Trump, and there have been emails suggesting I should have to answer for his immigration policies, which I'm not going to do because I have no hand in shaping them. I will say that the suggestion that I support keeping children in cages is as ridiculous as believing that I wish to starve them. You know, many of you up here probably voted for Bill Clinton. I think he's a sexual deviant who preyed on young women, but I wouldn't ask you to apologize for his behavior. And when Hillary Clinton was Secretary of State, I think she left four men to die in Benghazi, but I'm not going to ask anyone who voted for her to apologize for their deaths. It's not their responsibility. And when Representative Rashida Tlaib of Michigan made anti-Semitic comments, I did not ask any registered Democrat to take responsibility for them. Their behavior, ideas, and comments are theirs, and it is not someone else's to explain or apologize for. The standard that I should apologize for the behavior and actions of others is not one that this council would apply to anybody else up for your consideration. The last big issue in the last couple days seems to be that my support of Republican candidates has meant that I have, I'm sorry, my support of Republican candidates has meant that I have supported both Republicans who have been actively pro-LGBTQ issues, like Richard Tazei, Scott Brown, Bruce Tar, and Charlie Baker, who won 72% of the vote in Gloucester in 2018. But I've also supported Republican candidates who did not agree with question three on the 2018 ballot. Well, if I'm gonna be punished for the record for those who the left disagrees with, then I should also get the credit for my support of the candidates they do agree with. For the record, and this is very important, my perspective on the Republican Party's platform on LGBTQ issues and the marriage equality issue and anything related to it is that love is love, and adults should marry their life partner of their choosing and be unafraid to do so publicly. And that is my value system. But I will say this, and I think it's really important for this discussion, I have been a Republican since I was 18 years old, and I am really proud to be so. It's a huge part of my value system. We are the party who freed the slaves, who promoted the civil rights movement when Democrats fought it, who believe in individual liberty, small government, and the dignity of life from conception. I don't agree with every single Republican on every issue, and I don't agree with every part of the platform, but I'm also a very proud Catholic, and I don't agree with every tenet of that doctrine either. The human rights group should be diverse, and my appointment represents diversity. I am different than most of the people who will be put on this board because I represent a minority political group, and I'm also unafraid to do so. I don't allow myself to be bullied into silence by bloggers or loud liberal voices. I stand up for what I believe in, and I fight for my values, whether the majority likes it or not. This is America. Gloucester, Massachusetts is in America. The level of intolerance which has been sent my way has been staggering, but it really shouldn't come as a surprise. There are instances over the last couple days that it has risen to the level of defamation and malice, which is a legal standard, for the reckless disregard of the truth. My character and integrity has been attacked, mostly without any evidence offered other than rumors and paranoia to substantiate the claims. On smaller levels, it's done to conservatives every day in this city, and it has to stop. For a city like Gloucester, built by immigrants, including my family, and priding itself on acceptance, it's just sad. A strong woman, Evelyn Beatrice Hall, once said, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." I believe that that is what this commission is all about. It's about putting people on it who disagree, but will work to find common ground for the benefit of all Gloucester citizens. In my professional career, I have advocated for students as a teacher, their learning needs. I've worked on behalf of the disabled and injured for the last 15 years in my family's law firm. I have volunteered my time for nonprofits. I have advocated against standardized testing, which hurts children, school policies, which bring adult issues in children's lives which don't belong there. I've supported veterans, youth groups, victims of AIDS and other diseases, and our senior citizens. I have given my time, energy, and my name for years to try to make this city better, and now I have volunteered to serve on our Human Rights Commission. All of that said, the social media bullying which has gone on in the past few days is nothing close to political discourse. It is not how individuals who volunteer to serve this city should be treated. We wonder why children bully when they see adults doing it every day, most of them with the safety of their keyboards in front of them. We need to push back against the spreading of lies and paranoia, which so far, in the last few days, has degraded my personal reputation and assassinated my character, mostly with little evidence to support it. It's a sad testament to what this city has become. And so tonight, after consultation with my family, and I think it's the best course is to take a pause, and I ask you to send my appointment back for further vetting at the Ordinance and Administration Subcommittee. The heightened emotion injected into this discussion does not produce good government, and so I ask that you vote tonight to take a pause, to let cooler heads prevail, and move the discussion from emotion to reason. Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
Um, on the consent agenda, the appointment is 2/14/21, and in the motion, it was 2/14/23. I would like clarification on the date.
Okay, um, the correct date is 2/14/21. The 23 is a clerical error, I'll get that got forwarded from the, um, initial mayor's report.
Thank you, Councilor Cox.
Are you going to withdraw the motion, or should we amend it?
Um, yeah, we can, we can amend.
It's gonna go back to ONA, it shouldn't.
Okay, well, if somebody wants to amend it.
I'd like to amend the motion to bring this back to Ordinance Administration at a future date for further review.
So motion's been made and seconded to refer this back to Ordinance Administration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kesterson. Next, we have the...
Before we go, you didn't make a motion to send it back or do anything.
We just did.
No, you didn't. You just amended the motion. Councilor Cox was right, said there was a clerical error.
So it's been...
You put on the dates, you made a motion on the dates, but you didn't make a motion to do anything. So you have to make a motion, either to deny it, vote it, turn it back, whatever you do, but you gotta make that motion. She just made the clerical error. Thank you, Councilor Cox.
So the clerical error, Councilor's motion was to send this back to Ordinance Administration. Correct?
I believe there was a motion.
To send it back to Ordinance Administration.
Councilor Nolan said that he would like to amend it by sending it back.
Back to ONA for review.
Yes, and there was a second.
Yes.
So I think it was fully motioned.
It was.
And voted.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have the consent agenda. Are there any councilors that would like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? I would like to remove item number one under group petition under City Charter Section Is there anybody else that would like to remove some, anything from the consent agenda? Okay, um, so under, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so I would like to, all in favor?
Aye.
I would like to remove item number one, free petition, subscription subsection B, group petition in reference to expand surf access to Good Harbor Beach, and announce that under Charter Section 9-1 that the council has up to 90 days to hold a public hearing under subsection B, group petition, and that the council will be the public hearing based on the group petition on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, which is within the 90-day limit, and I so move. Okay, is, um, the, Councilor Cox, seconded by, and will you accept the consent agenda as amended?
Second. There was a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, can we call the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of January 9.
Councilor Cox.
Thank you. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept a private grant through FY20 MED Project LLC in partnership with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, approved MED program, drug stewardship program in the amount of $650 for the purpose of management and disposal of unwanted household-generated opioids and, I am never going to be able to say this, we said it at council, um, I'm not gonna be able to say...
Benzodiazepine.
Benzodiazepine, thank you. Medications, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, this grant is to be used to maintain the vault that the public can deposit its unwanted household medications in the police department's lobby.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept a U.S. Department of Justice F Y nineteen Bulletproof Vest Program grant passed through M E M A, passed through Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents with the grant expiration date of eight thirty-one twenty twenty-one for the purpose of purchasing thirteen ballistic vests for Gloucester Police Department officers, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, this is an annual grant that covers a portion of our, um, bulletproof vests.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept a state grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and F Y twenty State nine-one-one Department Training Grant Program for eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. The grant period, the period of this grant is from November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is another annual grant that we get to reimburse for training for the state nine-one-one system.
Awesome. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept a cash donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from the Peter and Elizabeth C. Tower Foundation to amend the Tower Foundation Healthy Communities Grant for a new total of one hundred and ten thousand and two fifty. This two fifty is an honorarium, is for the purpose of supporting any needs that arise for the Gloucester Youth Leadership Council, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's just a private grant, uh, that we've been awarded.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A nine, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund, undesigned fund balance, to other post-employment benefits, also known as O P E B, trust fund transfer in to partially fund the city's O P E B unfunded liability, and I so move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, for the last several years, we've been doing stabilization accounts, which will come, um, forward next. In addition to the breakdown of the forty, twenty, ten percent for the stabilization funds, the administration this year has, um, put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash towards O P E B, which it doesn't have to do, but we are, um, trying to pay down our liability for that, um, before it becomes a mandate. So I do applaud the administration for moving forward with that.
Great, good job. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll, please?
Councilor Cox.
Yes, I'm not first.
First. Who's first? Oh, Val, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Val Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Me.
Oh, we're going, oh, I'm sorry, it's the roll call on this. I'm sorry.
Roll call. Um, yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see. All right. Sorry.
Who's on the roll call?
Oh, it's, it's Val, it's Jen, I'm sorry. Councilor Holgrum, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pett?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to, um, approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A nine, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand passes a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Councilor Cox.
Just an additional side note on that two hundred and fifty thousand, um, the administration has been paying down our liability every year with free cash. At this year, because there was no snow and ice overage, um, they chose to do additional funds.
Thank you.
Um, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A ten, in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars from general fund to capital project stabilization fund per the capital plan funding and free cash distribution policy, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All right.
This is part of the, the standard forty, forty percent to capital project stabilization, twenty percent to building maintenance, and ten percent to the general stabilization, and I'll be making the motions in that order.
All righty. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pett?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
City council motion to approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A ten, in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend city council approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A eleven, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars from the general fund, um, account to the building maintenance stabilization fund transfers in per the capital plan funding and free cash distribution policy, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
None.
All righty, um, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pett?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
City council motion to approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A eleven, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A twelve, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars from the general fund undesigned fund balance to general stabilization fund transfer per the capital plan funding and free cash distribution policy, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded, uh, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
No.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can we call the roll, please?
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pett?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
City council motion to approve supplemental appropriation, twenty twenty S A twelve, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
All righty, thank you, Counselor Cox. Pretty late this evening. Um, Madam Clerk, can we please call the next order of business?
Order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of January sixth.
Counselor Nolan.
Uh, we have one item, uh, on a motion by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Blank. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen city council rules of procedure by adding to Rule One, meetings, a new subsection F as follows. F, the use of cell phones prohibited. The council use of cell phones during a city council meeting may lead to the public's perception that a council member is not paying attention to the subject matter at hand or that the council member is receiving information relative to the subject matter at hand that other council members and members of the public are not receiving, either one of which is harmful to good government and transparency. Therefore, the council's use of cell phones is prohibited during council meetings, and I'll bring this to Counselor Blank or Counselor Gilman for expedition. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, I think basically what you said is pretty much spot on. That's all I have to say. Counselor Gilman.
I, I support this motion a hundred percent. The one time where we might make an exception is if we're taking a picture of someone, and I think it will be obvious that that is the purpose of us grabbing our cellphone and taking a picture. But I think it's, it's a great, um, it's a great move forward to, um, to show the citizens of Gloucester and each other that we're totally listening to them and not deviating from the business at hand, so, thank you.
I'd also like to add about an emergency phone call. If somebody gets an emergency phone call, obviously, we're able to use them. Um, Counselor Holgrum?
I'd also like to voice my support for this measure. Uh, I agree with what's been said. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Counselor Cox.
Um, in a day and age where we use our phones for our calendars and we often discuss events at the end of the meeting, um, I, I don't fully support this. Um, I think most of us are very good at, um, making sure that we're using our iPads, but our phone is, um, a database that we often refer to, so I, I may still occasionally need my phone to access documents. Um, our, my iPad in particular has had problems in the past where I've had to pull up things through the website, so, um, I, there's still gonna be instances where we have to use our phones.
Well, I think at that point transparency would be a good saying, hey, I'm, I gotta look up a document or whatnot, you know, basically, yeah. Counselor O'Hara?
I want to second what Counselor Cox just referenced as far as I have used my cellphone. Have it here tonight. I have had numerous problems with my iPad where I've called up the agenda, other meeting notes, um, so I, I think in, in, really, it's, it's up to the professionalism of each counselor to be using. We live in a world of technology that counselors should be focusing on, obviously, the course of business, and whether you're holding this or an iPad, it's a form of communications. And the perception, well, people can perceive a lot of things, um, so with that, I, I can't support this because, again, I, I use this all the time.
Um, well, these are rules of procedure, so these are just rules that we follow, so there is a little bit of wiggle room in these two, you know. Counselor Cox.
Then I move to strike, therefore, the council's use of cellphone is prohibited during council meetings because we're basically giving the perception that it's prohibited. Um, I can, I can get my emails on here before I would even get them on here, but there are, this holds my calendar, so, um, I, I just, I don't agree with the strict harsh language because if we're gonna have it in there, then we should all abide by it. Um, that's just my opinion. And for the record, I am not able to get tonight's, um, agenda or minutes, um, or the packet, I'm sorry, on my iPad because it's too large and it wasn't broken down, so there's another problem.
Counselor Gilman.
I move that we refer this back to O N A for further discussion of the appropriate verbiage.
Second.
There's been a motion to refer it back to O N A. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for the, uh, the debate, everybody. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee of December fourth.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, on a motion by Counselor Holgrum, seconded by Counselor Gilman, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend G Z O Appendix A Rule Twenty-five, rules of procedure as follows. Under general procedure, strike one point four point two point two in paragraph one, where it appears twice, and add one point five point five Planning Board application form and content in place of one point four point two point two. Under decision, strike one point four point two point two E and add one point five point five Planning Board application form and content. Under Part Two, Council Rules on Special Permit Procedures, Application for Council's Special Permits B, strike one point four point two point two E and add one point five point five Planning Board application form and content, and under the same heading, Section D, strike one point four point two point two B and add one point five point five Planning Board application form and content, and Part Two, Council Rules on Special Permit Procedures, Five, Council Action D, strike one point four point two point two E and add one point five point five Planning Board application form and content, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna say why we're doing this. We're doing this because the numbers were wrong, and we wanted to be consistent with our zoning ordinance, so it's, it's really just a, a cosmetic issue, but we felt that it was imperative that we make this change, so...
Okay, this is a, uh, change to our zoning laws, so this is gonna be a roll call vote. Um, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pett?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
The city council vote to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, Appendix A Rule Twenty-five as specified, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman, uh, do we have one more? No meeting?
No. No? Okay. It was no meeting on January eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we call the next order of business, please?
It's under old business, the P and D minutes of twelve for two thousand and nineteen, Council Action to amend a motion regarding a correction of Scrivner's errors.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I move that the phrase be struck from the motion to grant the city of Gloucester and... Let me describe.
Yeah, move, it's been moved and seconded. Any, um, narrative?
So what I'd, I'd like to do is I'd just like to describe why we're doing this because it's regarding the sewer force main easement motion, and we added, um, it was a Scrivner mistake, and we needed to, um, cancel adding the city of Gloucester to it, so this amendment will clarify that Scrivner's error.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Gilman.
The next motion is, um, I move to correct the December fourth, two thousand and nineteen P and D Committee minutes to strike the statement on page two, this matter is to be advertised for public hearing, and I so move.
Second.
Basically.
So basically, what this is all about is that at, in the minutes, we said that we were gonna have to bring this to public hearing, and this was that renumbering of that zoning that we just discussed, and we felt it wouldn't be a good use of taxpayers' money to have to post it in a newspaper because clearly it was just a matter of renumbering, and we didn't think that that was necessary. So we wanted to amend the minutes to be consistent with our desire that we really didn't need to have to put this out for public hearing. So I hope you all support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is, um, Public Hearing, two thousand and nineteen, zero fifty-eight, Special City Council Permit, two thousand and nineteen, zero zero eight, Fuller Street, number thirty-five, map one sixty-eight, lot fourteen, Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section Fuller Street, Number 35, MAP 168, Lot 14, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section 1.8.3 Standard to be applied, Section 2.3.1 Sub parentheses 7, Conversion to or New Multifamily or Apartment Dwelling 4 to 6 Units, Section 3.2.2A Minimum of Lot Area per Dwelling Square Foot Unit, and Section 3.2.2A Minimum per Open Space Dwelling Square Foot Unit to increase the number of residential condominium units from two three-bedroom units to four two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units for a total of six units in the neighborhood business, our 20 district.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an ethics declaration if I could?
Yes, sir.
Under Mass Law 268A, I'd like to declare that the attorney, Mark Nestor, for the proponent of this project is a tenant of mine and that I have not had any discussions with him about this matter since the election and also that I have no financial interest whatsoever in that in any way, shape, or form. And I'll be able to participate in this action.
Thank you, Council Pat. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. I just want to make a brief statement before we do this. Our council rules of procedure say that the proponent gets 15 minutes, opposition gets 15 minutes, and everybody else after that gets three minutes. These are our council rules of procedure. This is what we're going to follow this evening. And I'm going to hold up a timer here so everybody is aware of their time. And we're going to be strict and keep everything to the 15 minutes. If the proponent only takes eight minutes or five minutes, the opposition will still have their full 15 minutes to present. So, that being said, Attorney Nestor, let me know when you're ready and I will start the timer.
It appears that I have a problem with the PowerPoint, which was test driven a while ago. So, I will refer to the handouts that you have already, which essentially, I'm going to repeat what you have in all the various handouts in the application. For the record, my name is Mark Nestor. I'm an attorney, 45 Middle Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts. I represent the applicants, Bowport Shores LLC. Right in mind, the City Council, there are only three requests before the City Council would ask that you concentrate on the same. One, there's a special permit to convert to new multifamily 4 to 6 dwellings in a 1.8.3 to increase the number of residential units from two three-bedroom units to four two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. Now, with the deed restricted to affordable housing unit. The second is a special permit to decrease minimum lot area per dwelling unit per 3.2.2A from 60,000 square feet to 9,792 square feet. The third is a special permit to decrease minimum open space per dwelling unit from 3.2.2A from 45,000 square feet to 1,358 square feet. These, the only matters before the City Council and the only statements referring to same should be considered. The prior building, which you can't see on there but are in the application, was built around 1900. It was destroyed by fire in October 24th, 2014. Currently, it's a vacant, underutilized resource within the village of Magnolia. The owners are currently maintaining the lot by removing trash, cutting back the overgrowth, and clearing the sidewalks of snow. However, it still exists as an empty lot. The ZB on 8/8/19 granted the petition a certain relief, among them, a special permit to exceed the 30-foot height to 35 feet, a special permit to alter and expand a nonconforming structure, and to grant it certain dimensional setback variances. The purpose of this application is to construct four two-bedroom condominium units, two one-bedroom condominium units, and one commercial unit with a sprinkler system and elevator. This is the condominium building. It will have a condominium association for the management of the building and the property. It is not an apartment building. It will replace six bedrooms with 10 bedrooms. It will reduce three commercial units to one. It will remove a 282-square-foot shed and will construct 12 off-street parking. It will also construct a new onsite wastewater system, which has been approved by the Board of Health, construct a new stormwater management system designed by an engineer and approved by the City of Gloucester Planning Board and Engineer. It will install an elevator and will provide a ZBA mandated screening along the boundary. The site plan, which is in your packet, which I believe is Exhibit 4, contains 12 parking spots in the back with exits off Norman Avenue for condominium owners previously not on, previously had no onsite parking. 24-foot space between parking space and the building, which will allow cars to turn around within the property. This was designed by an engineer and approved by the Planning Board and meets all the requisite codes. It provides retention of stormwater runoff and drainage within the lot due to increased subsurface stormwater facility. The design, which is in the package, we wanted to present an appealing site to visit and residence when entering Magnolia from Magnolia Avenue Raymond. Rear-facing the church would have additional screening. Snow management, trash recycling, fire department, ambulance access, new sewage disposal, new stormwater management system, all are considered and incorporated into the design. The HVA system was relocated to the top of the third floor under the 35-foot maximum to address concerns of abutters in the City Council. The footprint of the current building that was destroyed was 2,390 square feet, and that's in Exhibit 7, which has the handout, which is 2,108 square feet for the building and 282 for the shed. The proposed footprint is 2,665 square feet, including removing the shed. So, it's an increase of 15% or 275 square feet. The height of the original building was 35.8, where initial proposal was 40 feet, and the ZBA reduced it based on information from abutters and others to 35 feet. There's six special permit standards. Number one is the social, economic, and community needs will be served by the proposed site. This site will be six condominium units, not apartments. Homeownership will ensure a higher level of maintenance and increased housing availability in Gloucester. Further, one of the one-bedroom units will be affordable housing, which is not required under the ordinances, but by clients volunteered. It will be deed restricted, which will run with the property, not with the unit. We also will remove a large vacant lot eyesore nuisance that currently occupies Magnolia that assails visitors when they enter the square from either Raymond Avenue or Magnolia Avenue with a tastefully designed residence and commercial structure. The design was enhanced to comport with the surrounding architecture in Magnolia. As you will see in Exhibit 7A, the location has always been nonconforming, a nonconforming lot and a nonconforming building, similar to all other ones in the square. If you look at Exhibit 7A, which unfortunately, we can't show there, you will see that almost all the buildings on the area, the minimum lot size, the under, the minimum lot area per open space is under and the open space is under. Approximately 80% are in the same situation as our proposal. It's located in Magnolia Square, which is an area that includes many commercial entities, i.e. Magnolia Variety, Magnolia Health Center, Magnolia Service Station, and the rear is Union Congregational Church. It is located in an area where most, all surrounding buildings are located in the same nonconforming lots. Three-story building has always been there. This also approval will create short-term construction jobs, eliminates recent current water flow onto Fuller Street and Norman Avenue, and provides significant increase in real estate taxes. In regards to the second criteria, traffic flow and safety, off-street parking for all residences, unlike the old building where there's only on-and-street parking for the apartments, will reduce the traffic on the square. Off-street parking will be off Norman Avenue to the rear of the building. The parking lot, which was designed by a licensed engineer, is sufficient for motor vehicles to turn around within the parking lot and not have to move back into the street. The business units are reduced from three to one. I note that commercial establishments surrounding it, as well as the abutting church and some residents, do not have off-street parking and are completely or partially rely on the use of Norman Avenue, Fuller, Raymond, and Magnolia avenues for the owners, employees, customers, and tenants' parking. The rest on seating has been reduced from 24 to 16, which reduced the customer-vehicle parking. Takeout entrance relocated to Norman Avenue, which will suitable parking for quick-stop, grab-and-go, will not have an impact on the parking or the traffic. Large portion of business is pedestrian from within the village. The boat is in Magnolia Beach. For decades, Magnolia Square has been able to handle the traffic flow from the Landing, Magnolia House of Pizza, the Surf Restaurant, which did have on-and-off, off-street parking but increased traffic coming and going, the Edge Water Cafe and the adjoining Bradley's Liquor Store, and the Union Congregational Church without an impact. Given the loss of the Surf Restaurant, the Edge Water Cafe, and the Liquor Store, traffic should be reduced, not increased. Entrance and exit for the residents of the building is off Norman Avenue to help alleviate traffic entering the square. Boat traffic landing has always been there, but it remains very seasonal. Safety is enhanced by both having the entire building outfitted with sprinklers, as well as the proximity of the fire station, which is now open year-round. In regards to Criteria 3, adequacy of utilities and other public services, the utilities and other public services are more than adequate. The building will have a brand-new onsite wastewater system that has been approved by the Board of Health. The Planning Board has approved new subsurface sub-stormwater facility and new sprinkler system. The units are only one or two bedrooms versus the prior, which were three bedrooms, and should not have a detrimental impact on the social school system. In regards to neighborhood character, previously, I submitted to the City Council petition a postcard signed by 192 residents. As I understand, there have been more emails of sports sent to the City Council since that time. Clearly, a number of residents do not have concerns regarding this building, have a negative impact on the neighborhood quality and social characteristics. They want the building. In regards to qualities of the natural environment, with the new approved stormwater management system and the new approved onsite wastewater system, the qualities of the natural environment will actually improve. Stormwater will now be collected onsite and retained rather than be allowed to pour down into the square, which can only have a negative impact, especially in the winter, on the steep grades of Raymond Street. In regards to potential finance fiscal impact, approval will increase the real estate tax base and increase, provide increased real estate revenues to the city. This building is commensurate with the neighborhood. In regards to dimensional special permits under 3.2.2A allows minimum lot area per dwelling unit or minimum open space per dwelling unit or both to be decreased by special permit from the City Council, criteria. Only in finding that less a lot area open spaces in keeping with the neighborhood character and structural density. Minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. The minimum open space is 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Minimum open space is 7,500 square feet per dwelling. Open space is defined as the remaining lot area after excluding buildings, driveways, and parking. This ordinance is guided by the principles set out in Mass General Law Chapter 48, Zoning Enable Act, the act in its introduction set out of having minimum lot sizes, namely, to protect important resources and landscapes. However, included within Chapter 48 is Section 9 Special Permits, which clearly authorizes zoning authorities to grant special permits for just the type of relief that the applicant is seeking. This site does not increase congestion, overburn the site, or reduce lighter air. Magnolia Square and surrounding are a mixed-use and diverse neighborhood, including a church, a market, a professional office with attached apartments, a garage, multifamily apartment buildings, single-family residents, including residents... In Chapter 7A, you will see that when I did the comparison on 7A, I did decrease the open space parking for driveways or things like that. I only did that for 35 Fuller. This is the neighborhood character the applicant wants to be part of. The proposed building is consistent with the criteria. Many of the current buildings are located in underside lots, which don't meet the minimums for open space. Many more are densely configured than what the current zoning would allow. Very little increase in actual lot area or open space from the prior building. It is therefore submitted that proposed building is consistent with the structural density and the neighborhood character. We've all come to face with the ruins of 35 Fuller Street for more than five years. This is what the residents see when they first enter the village. My clients see a chance to revitalize the square, to provide something that can force with the neighborhood, at the same time provide needing housing. They have addressed the matters before the City Council. I ask you not to be swayed by issues that are not before you. Instead, I ask you to focus on the specifics requested before you. It is submitted for the scope of review that the City Council has in this project. The applicants have complied and their application should be approved. It's under 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mark.
My apologies for my PowerPoint dying.
12 minutes.
It's a new record.
It is a new record. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Please come up to the podium. Name and address for the record, please. If there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor, if you could line up behind this gentleman, we'd appreciate it. Name and address, sir?
Good evening. Mike Fallman, 14 Cliff Avenue. I love living in Gloucester. I love living in the village. I love everything about the town, except one thing. Pulling into that village, which I do as a resident 10 times a day, in or out, it is, it's an eyesore, doesn't even come close to cutting it. There's two big cement stairways that go nowhere. They're just sitting there like nobody cares. It's commonly known in big cities that when you allow lots to become a mess like this with the cement stairways, there's all kinds of craziness coming, craziness coming out of the ground. Crime ensues. I'm a big fan of this project. I'm a big fan of Attorney Nestor, not just because I want it to look beautiful and nice and have the pizza place back, which I do. I just don't want the eyesore anymore. It's the front door to this village. It's the front door when I have guests come visit. When I pull in, I just, I just turn my head sometimes. And I hope you'll take that into account when you hear from other people tonight who, I don't know if they live nearby, that they just generally object to certain things or have during this process. Yes, of course, there'll be a few more cars. Yes, of course, there'll be a few more parking spaces taken up by people visiting the pizza place. But that, that should in no way be the death knell to this project. And if this gets voted down, no one else is going to spend their time and money to have plans drawn and attorney's fees and whatnot to come before this board again and try all over again. This is our one chance to clean up this horrible location. Unless someone else has any better ideas for it, I really strongly encourage you to vote in favor of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Noreen Gillis. I live at 28 Lake Road in Magnolia. I've been here since the beginning of time for this project. I've supported it all along. I really feel that the developers have compromised the height. They lowered it. They've taken into consideration the opponent's views on some of the issues. The old building didn't have off-street parking. This one does. I grew up at nine Norman Ave, excuse me, and my driveway went out onto Norman Ave. I had to back out of my driveway. I didn't hit anyone. I didn't kill anyone. I didn't have any accidents. I don't see why the opposition thinks that the parking is going to be a problem when they can turn around and drive out onto Norman Ave. The issue for congestion, we had a fundraiser in August to raise money for the Magnolia Pier, and we had over 1,000 people that showed up in Magnolia, and they parked. And they had no complaints that I heard of, of any issues. So, yes, this is going to bring in people, but I don't think it's going to cause any traffic issues or safety issues. I think that the developers have met all of their requirements, and I really hope that you people will vote for this tonight and not postpone it and not pull a 211(c), which I really don't understand what that was the last time. I really feel we can't keep on having people come out to these meetings and not feel as though they're being heard. Thank you very much. And by the way, welcome. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Noreen. Name and record for, I mean, name and address for the record, please?
Cristo, 22 Magnolia Ave, registered to vote at 22 Magnolia Ave as well. I've emailed all of you, so I'm not going to rehash all that. I forwarded, hope you didn't get, hope you get through the five emails yesterday. But many emails on the topic that address the six criteria, address things that have been brought up in each of the meetings before that we've been at. So, I just want to reemphasize that and stand up here because I think it's important that we stand up here and say we do support this, even though behind the scenes, we've reached out to many of you numerous times. And in those emails as well, you're probably, it addressed some of the things that I think you're going to hear soon about the dramatizations, about the environmental, the parking, the safety, the mixed use, what's true and what's not. So, hope you consider that when you're hearing from the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Name and address for the record, please?
Ted Costa, 97, Hesper Savinum. I'd just like to say thank you all, first and foremost, for the job you guys have done so far in this application. It's not been one of the easy ones. I thank you all for being prepared. You know, I was quite perturbed when the 211(c) got invoked seven weeks ago, but I understand the council needed some more time to do some homework. Seven weeks is a good amount of time. I think you guys are probably ready. The Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, as well as Subcommittee on Planning and Development, have done the lion's share of this work. Permits are issued. Approvals are done. Meeting after meeting has been undertaken. And the application before you needs to be looked at at face value, plain and simple. It doesn't need to be looked at for things that aren't before you, aren't necessarily in need of being discussed, and voted up or down. You know, with those six factors, I'd like to give you my view on how I see them. As it pertains to social and economic community needs, that will be served, quite simply, the rebuild of the meeting place that stood for decades would rebuild... the rebuild of the meeting place that stood for decades would be rebuilt. The Adage of Metchum, Doc Vieira's, or the square, or the house of pizza will once again be. A large structure that once stood, took up the entire footprint of that parcel of land will again take up that entire parcel of land. The vote to allow the applicant to build a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot will be consistent with most of the properties in that area, from the Magnolia Library down to the square. Magnolia, you know, once the destination of the rich and famous, was built well before zoning, as was most of our fair city, and is rather difficult to apply the current zoning ordinance to what's been non-conforming for so very long. Traffic flow and safety related factors have been raised and should be considered next. Public safety is something I spent the last thirty years of my life dealing with. I must say, you all have heard of the gravity of the situation surrounding Magnolia Squares that pertains to traffic. We have all seen photos produced from every angle by the proponents and the opponents alike. Not one of them shows a car. Not one of them shows a person. You know why? Because it's not like they describe it. It's a friendly residential neighborhood, and I guess it's a good thing, seeing how dangerous the area has been proposed to be. My research shows that no pedestrian accidents, no loss of life ever occurred in Magnolia Square. It shows that over the past twenty-five years, there have been at least three city councils residing in Ward Five, including the last two terms, the current mayor. With all that political equity, not one order has been changed to do anything for all this havoc that traffic and the pedestrian dangers appear to have been portrayed as being in Magnolia Square. As it was said tonight, we did a fundraiser with a committee. Cheers for the pier. Most of you heard of it, most of you participated in it, most of you donated to it. We taxed that square by taking the parking lot out of play and putting a thousand people into it with delivery trucks, live music, entertainment, and auction. And guess what? Police department said there wasn't one complaint. Not one concern. I see my clock's at three minutes. I've got about four more pages, so I'll stop here, but I encourage you to vote for the project. It's just common sense, and you guys have had more than enough time to prepare for it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this? No? Alrighty. Is there anybody like to speak in opposition? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Meredith Fine of forty-six Middle Street in Gloucester, representing Jerry McCarthy, who grew up on this square and is with me tonight and owns two of the abutting properties. The applicant is seeking to build. Our concerns are about the mass of the building and the parking, fundamentally. Your question is before you, how does this project affect the neighborhood? The applicant is seeking an eight thousand four hundred square foot building, more or less, and what I'm showing you is a picture, by way of comparison, of what a three-story, eighty-four hundred square foot building looks like in Gloucester. This is Roger Street. This is Lat forty-three, and this is a building that's mostly occupied by Rockport Mortgage. It's the same size of, obviously, I'm not saying it looks the same as this building would look, but when we talk about mass, this is what we're talking about. This is a neighborhood business district, not a commercial district. So, for example, East Gloucester Square is a neighborhood business district, and I seriously doubt that any of you would vote to put this in East Gloucester Square. Captain Hooks is in the neighborhood business district. The Little River Variety is in the neighborhood business district. I don't think you would ever consider such a large building in a neighborhood business district. A lot of the people who favor this project don't live right in this neighborhood. Some of them don't live anywhere near this neighborhood. Of course, they have the right to express their opinion, but it should say something to the council that most of the people who live right around this property don't want This will not be the same as what was there before, as I read in some of the emails that have been submitted. This building will be a third larger than what was there and will be essentially built out to the property lines. It will have ten bedrooms and a takeout restaurant on the first floor. The original building had two residential units, was permitted for two residential units, and had commercial on the first floor. And what exactly are you proving here in terms of parking? So, tonight, we hear that the twelve spaces are back. The last time we were here, the applicant said that it was just going to be eleven spaces. When the applicant was in front of P and D, it was twelve spaces. At that time, the applicant realized that the dumpster couldn't fit with twelve spaces. And so first, they proposed to change the ratio of cars from, to increase the number of compact cars. But then, when it was pointed out to them that that violated the zoning ordinance, then they said they were going to have eleven spaces with eight full-size cars and four compact cars. Apparently, that doesn't work either. They're back to twelve cars. The point I'm trying to make here is, that parking lot does not work. It is too tight. They know it. And it's going to be congestion at the entrance into that parking lot. There's going to be congestion in Magnolia Square. And also, I would note that I don't know where an applicant gets to move around the parking spaces without any review. And bear in mind that if this project were starting from scratch, which is what the zoning requires, that it was supposed to start from scratch, it should have had eighteen spaces, and it's only got either eleven or twelve. It is the job of the zoning board and the planning board and the board of health to look at very specific elements of a plan, but it is your job as the city council to look at the big picture. That's why you get this bite at that apple, to look at the big picture. Your job is to protect this neighborhood. The applicant himself noted that the heart of, the commercial heart of Magnolia is on Lexington Avenue, not in Magnolia Square. This is a neighborhood. It is zoned for neighborhood business. What the applicant is entitled to is what he had before, and that's what Mr. McCarthy supports, not this. I urge you to turn this down.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Lou Tierney, five Hespera Circle. I'm going to start out by showing a quick one-minute video by Abram. He's the pastor at the church, and you can imagine how a pastor has a lot of demand. So Abram, videotape this for your viewing. Looks like it's the day of computer issues, huh? Okay, let's see. External speakers. Okay, so I won't waste my time on that. I'll go right to the PowerPoint. Basically, Abram was saying that the, what is going on here?
Mary Lou, I suggest you use your time wisely.
Yep. Okay. I'm just wondering what happened to my PowerPoint. All right, so I'll go here. So, as you've heard, what the, what is before the council is, that we're asking you to vote no to, is an eighty-four percent relief to reduce the required area per dwelling from ten thousand square feet to sixteen hundred and sixty square, sixty-four square foot per dwelling. Also, what's being asked is a ninety-seven percent relief to, of open space per dwelling from seventy-five hundred square feet to two hundred square feet. It wasn't right for Magnolia in nineteen seventy-eight, and especially because of climate change. It's definitely not right for Magnolia today. Really built, a brief history of, so in nineteen seventy-eight, okay, there we go. In nineteen seventy-eight, the estate of Doc Vieira petitioned the ZBA for six apartments, one store, and twelve parking spaces. It was categorically denied, stating that the six apartments were excessive, the conversion from a single family to the proposal wasn't, hadn't, would have an adverse effect on the immediate neighborhood, and it would derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinances. Then, in nineteen seventy-nine, the new owners of the building, the Harveys, went back to the ZBA and asked for the, petitioned for the property to be zoned from what it was with the Vieiras to how it is zoned today, which is the commercial space and two residential units, and that's what it is today. And in that decision, they said it would not affect the social character of the neighborhood. It would not change the natural environment, and it would not appreciably change the traffic, safety, or flow. So, there's been a precedent set for this property. The boundaries that six units and twelve parking spaces is too much. It was too much in nineteen seventy-eight, when clearly there is not the population and the traffic that, that is, of that time that there is today. Another option that I would like to bring forward, what was presented and approved in twenty sixteen was a four-unit, eight-bedroom complex, and that proposal was largely welcomed and embraced by the community. This proposal for the, for the, for the six bedrooms and the twelve parking spaces, it's actually, they can only fit eleven, is now not. So what we're asking, what this group is saying, we're not saying do nothing. We don't want to look at an empty lot, but the six units with the twelve parking is too much. This community has accepted a four-unit proposal. So what I, what I also want you to think about as I go through a couple of last points is, let's talk about then the difference of going from six units to, from four units to six, and what the real estate tax benefit would be to the city. And using twenty-twenty numbers, the benefit is ten thousand five hundred dollars per year. So the, the basic point I want to make with you is, are all these compromises worth that little bit of money? Briefly, this comparison sheet is, is really irrelevant, because all of these properties were built well before nineteen ninety-five, and with zoning ordinances, these properties became out of compliance. Special permits and variances were not granted to bring these out of compliance. They came, became out of compliance because the zoning laws changed. So, so I, please caution that this is not a precedent. One point of note, for the last seven weeks, our community has been counting cars. At earlier presentations, it's been noted that, that the traffic on a Saturday night and people attending the AA meetings are a fraction of who attend on Sunday. Well, that is wrong. Fifty to sixty percent more people attend the AA meetings, and, and I propose to you that, that, and so Doug Shatford was going to be here tonight to speak. He had to leave to pick up his son. I spoke to him today, and I said, Doug, what happens when somebody might not be able to park? He says, well, they're going to, if they can't find a parking space, they're going to go to a bar, they're going to get drunk, they're not going to be, now a so. Doug?
Um, we need to stop this, please. She has her fifteen minutes. Go ahead, Mary Lou, I'm sorry.
Can I get like twenty seconds?
You can keep, keep going.
And I say to you, and but for the grace of God go I and others who are not afflicted with addiction, and that's what our city is known for. So is ten thousand five hundred dollars worth a life that might be injured or killed because of a, of an accident? Is ten thousand five hundred dollars worth it? Here are images of, of cars on the road. My other concern, I work from home. I traverse this road many times a day. Now with Sherrys, there's a semi-truck delivery I can barely get by at the variety store. That's had a, have, had a changeover of ownership. The traffic there is significantly increased over the previous owner. Two more quick points I'm trying to make is, I want to, I recognize that the board of health has approved the septic plan. I had a forty-five minute discussion with Craig Lo Piccolo, and I was, it was curious to me, the concerns he expressed to me about the plan. It is not, these deep observation holes, the data for this, these are twenty-year-old data that, which determine the water table levels. Water tables have risen with climate change. This is a septic system. The fluid will not be contained on the property, and he winced a little bit when I asked him about that. The next point I'd like to bring to your attention is, the applicant has chosen that they're not going to replace the tanks for the septic system. They're going to try to just reuse them. They're decades old, and if you were one of these buyers, wouldn't you want to know that this shiny new condo has decades-old tanks? Buyer beware. And lastly, as of twenty seventeen, we all remember the storm in March. Thirty-five Fuller is now in a floodplain. And I appreciate when I was at the council large debate in Lanesville, that the group admitted that we are not operating under current floodplain maps. So, for, these are very serious concerns. It's, it's not, and I say for these reasons, and the ones you're to hear, please vote no because of the impact to the environment, the safety, and the social fabric of this community who embraces people with addiction problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up to the microphone. If you guys would like to form a line over here, so we can see how many people are going to speak in opposition, I'd appreciate it. The council will appreciate it. Name and, and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Dave Morrow. I live at twenty-six Long Hill Road. I'm not going to express opinion on whether you should approve this project or not. My concern is that when this building gets sold to the people who buy the condos, who will be owning the restaurant? And will it stay? who will be owning the restaurant and will it stay a restaurant? That's my concern. Can we get some assurance if you decide to approve this that this will always be a restaurant in Magnolia? Because I don't really know the people. I don't know how committed they are to that specific thing. So if we could have that assurance, the community, I think, would be a little more comfortable. And a nice thing would be to have them assure us that there would be a public bathroom in this restaurant. That was always the problem in the pizza place because, you know, it was always on the edge of working and so that was an issue. So if those two things could be incorporated into, if you choose to approve it, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Next. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Duncan, Three Hesper Circle. A resident at Three Hesper Circle for over fifty years. So we know a little bit about the community. And certainly, we knew Doc Viera. We knew what the building was. And we saw it change over time. Our regulations change. And we know that many, many houses that exist today in Magnolia and throughout the city couldn't be built today on the lot that they exist. So they're there. Massachusetts address, the whole issue, and I know you guys are dealing with it, where the Title V proposition became a requirement in nineteen ninety-five. And they recognized that you can't impose the regulations on something that already exists. Should something be totally lost and the person has to rebuild, you can't say it was already there. You can't replace it. That was clearly established in the regulations. So you are allowed to grandfather in, whatever it was, however bad it was, right on top of the sidewalk. No war... It doesn't make any difference. If it existed, you can replace it. We're here today and I know that everybody here is definitely interested in getting something on that piece of property. We don't like the way it looks. It needs to be an attractive piece of property. The property is there. It needs to be developed. I think we do have a couple of things in common. We want that to occur and we want it to be consistent with regulations. And what's being proposed is not consistent with regulations. Title V, without me beating up on it, requires you can replace what was there if it was totally lost by fire and removed. You can do that. That's allowed. You cannot, if there's an increase in units, oh my gosh. Two to six, that's an increase. Number of beds, six to ten, those are huge increases. It's not allowed. They do not allow that. But they do give you a way around it. If that's the problem, it is considered not replacement, a new building. It must conform to all of the current codes. There's no grandfather. And you can't take what they're trying to put in there and do it. It won't work. Thank you for your time. If anybody has any questions. I hope you will vote no for this proposal, as it was mentioned before by Mary Lou. A close replacement was proposed and the opposition is not like this is. This is way too much. And I know what they're looking at. They're looking at six units and they're looking at the restaurant, which I share the other view. It'll not work and they'll be back here saying, "Now we have a open space. We want to convert that to condos, which are working."
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to leave your written statement with our Assistant City Clerk, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Mary Lou, if you're done with your slideshow, can you shut the projector off? Thank you very much. Next, please. Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Keith Zelman. I live at twenty-eight Woodward Ave. in Gloucester. I am the church moderator of Union Congregational Church at Three Norman Avenue. We are abutters to the thirty-five Fuller Street property. I'm speaking for myself and on behalf of our church's minister and the entire governance board. We are not aware of any traffic impact study undertaken by the developers. We understand that a traffic impact study is not required for the project of this scope. Still, Attorney Nestor has claimed confidently that the proposal will positively impact traffic flow. Yet we have no evidence to substantiate this claim. And it indeed seems counterintuitive. We're concerned for the safety of the sixty-five or so worshippers who attend Sunday mornings, at least a dozen of whom are children. We're concerned for the safety of folks who come to the Saturday night meetings, youth group meetings, vacation Bible school, and other midweek activities, not to mention the early morning bus stop that is on the rotary. We do not wish to see the dangerous combination of a rotary, a new twelve-car parking lot, and kids walking on the sidewalks. We're concerned that the project, as it is proposed now, will greatly increase traffic and adversely affect the safety of many children and adults who frequent the area just next to the proposed parking lot. We have a lot of other concerns, which we have brought before other boards with this project. And we... I would just like to say that, like everyone else, we want to see something built there. We had a proposal a couple of years ago that the community was behind. It was within scope of the lot and it wasn't an overbuild. This project feels like the developer needs to get a certain margin to make it worth their while. And so they have increased the size of the building, made it looming. They've increased everything about it, asked for all of our zoning, which is there for a reason, to be ignored. And that's why we're opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please leave your written statement with our Assistant City Clerk, please? And anybody else, if you have a written statement, could you please leave them with our Assistant City Clerk so we can have it for the record, please? Thank you very much. Next.
I won't be able to leave this written statement because...
Name and address.
John O'Hara. So my name is John O'Hara and I'm a lifelong resident in the village of Magnolia. I currently own and reside at nine Butler Ave. Manchester. However, I also rent this house on a regular basis to Gordon College students during the school year. And during this time, I reside at my family's house at fifty-five Lexington Ave. Magnolia. No matter which address I am living, I am impacted by the activity in Magnolia Square. First, I'd like to say I and we are not opposed to a building at thirty-five Fuller Street. Just one that fits the neighborhood. To start with, I'd like to say I feel that no matter what side you're on, whether you're pro and con of this building, I think the large representation of Magnolia residents here tonight shows how much we all love and our passion about our special little piece of paradise in Magnolia. My main concern of the proposed building is environmental and how a ten-bedroom building and its runoff directly down onto the beach and into the ocean at Magnolia Beach will affect things. As a surfer, swimmer, and diver, I am in the water and Magnolia Harbor year-round, as well as daily walking the beach. Historically, the Gloucester end of Magnolia Beach has had a strong odor, earning it the nickname of Stinky Beach. During the summer, the odor can be overwhelming on that side of the village. And the sand can be overly warm, very soft where one sinks in while walking. Additionally, the high bacteria count in the water in summer has caused it to be closed to swimming on several occasions in recent years. From what I've read within the approved septic report, it states there is no increased sewage flow from the septic design of 2001. I find this impossible. How can a building of two apartments, a pizza joint, and a hairdresser go to ten bathrooms, six kitchens, a restaurant, and not have increased sewage flow? My second concern is the traffic safety issue. I recently witnessed drivers completely blow through all three stop signs on a regular basis, not even tapping their brakes. In the past two weeks, I pulled over in front of Fuller Street, in front of... At thirty-five Fuller Street in Magnolia Square and watched many a cars either roll through the stop signs or completely blow right through them from all sides. If you are one that lives in Magnolia, you know this is the reality of Magnolia Square. My third concern of the proposed building is a lack of parking. It states there is twelve-car parking behind this. This is a far, far reach. And I truly feel that six cars is probably the maximum that could fit behind there. Additionally, the excess amount of cars...
John?
Yes?
We're at the three minutes.
Okay, I'll close. So concerned is parking and environmental, in addition to how it fits the neighborhood. That's it. Again, we are not opposed to a building, just one that fits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Elaine. I live at thirty-three Fuller Street. I'm new to the neighborhood. I've been there... Moved there July... Been there three years. And so I don't feel I may have as much say on this as other people, but I will say that this building... There was no building in that lot when I first moved there. And I recognize, like everybody else, that something needs to go there. It's definitely an eyesore. But, I mean, to build a building that's so big, I mean, even though to the neighborhood, I can see where this is going to be a problem. You know, to the people that have grown up there, you know, to have the neighborhood changed. I mean, I know there was a big building there before, but it's gone now. It's been gone since I moved there. And to see what's going up concerns me a lot. The rest of the stuff I wanted to say, everybody else has already covered, so I'm not going to repeat everything, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Adele Ferrera and I live at seven Norman Ave. When you build a building, it's there forever unless it burns down. And this building, as proposed, is too big for its lot. It will come right up to the sidewalk on both Norman and on Fuller Street and will go up three stories high. And the parking lot will take up the rest of the lot. It's really... What was there before was non-conforming, but this is going to be more non-conforming. There are zoning restrictions and requirements and those things are good. And I don't think we should be giving special permits to build something that's going to be... Something that's going to be an eyesore to us, that we're going to have to look at every day for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sandy Ronan and I live at five Magnolia Avenue with my husband, John. First, I want to thank all of you for your time and commitment in... On being on the city council. I know it's an enormous time commitment and we're very grateful. I want there to be a reasonable development at thirty-five Fuller Street. For me, that would mean a building much closer to the size of the building that burned down. It would include four units, one of which would be truly affordable, along with one retail space. I'm concerned about what is defined as affordable here. My perspective is influenced by my experience in working to get the Community Preservation Act passed and serving on its committee for six years. As a family therapist, I have also had longstanding concern for the need for affordable housing. These two perspectives are connected. The Community Preservation Act has been a great boost to preserving Gloucester's character through its funding of preservation of buildings and open spaces, but also affordable housing. Preserving Gloucester's character means preserving the diversity of neighborhoods. We all need to do our part in providing affordable housing so that our teachers, city employees, daycare providers, healthcare workers, bank clerks, police officers, firemen, fishermen, and artists can continue to live here. We have several luxury developments going on or have been built in Magnolia Square and I'm concerned about the balance as it relates to preserving the diversity of the community. So basically, that's what I have to ask you to consider that. And thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gerald McCarthy. I'm on Butter, owning the properties at thirty-three and thirty-one Fuller Streets, which is where I grew up. My family has owned both of these properties for several generations, so Magnolia is near and dear to my heart. I'm concerned about the negative impacts on the immediate neighborhood that this proposal will have, namely parking, additional traffic, pedestrian and child safety, as this is a bus stop, and noise. Simply put, this proposal is too dense for this parcel, as demonstrated by the very substantial amount of relief, zoning relief, that was needed to make a six-unit, ten-bedroom, twenty-seat restaurant design work. We all, as everybody said, you know, we all want to see something get built there, but not something that is larger and substantially more non-conforming than the previous building. Over a hundred and sixty Magnolia residents signed a petition in which they feel that this proposal is not a net positive for the immediate neighborhood. I would ask you that you please respect their concerns and do not approve a building that is too big for the parcel, does not fit with the character of the neighborhood, and does not appropriately consider the density, parking, noise, and safety hazards that it would create. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you leave your written statement with our clerk, please? Next.
Hi, my name is Carol Durka. I live at...
Could you speak right into the microphone? Yeah, so if you get real close like this, everybody can hear you.
Alright, thanks. My name is Carol Durka. I live at seven Norman Avenue. First, I just want to say that for many people and for me getting up in front of city council and to grab people is very intimidating. And I am also uncomfortable speaking against something. That doesn't feel right, but I am against this. I'm here because I am for something. I'm for a smaller building than this plan proposes and I am for saving the green space in my neighborhood. Under the standards to be applied rules for reviewing special permit applications, I see a problem with factor number two as it applies to this plan, traffic flow and safety. More units equals more cars in an already busy intersection. And I also see problems with vectors four and five, neighborhood character and qualities of the natural environment. This building is way too large for the lot. That's why it needs so much relief. Almost all of the land will be covered by the building and the parking lot, plus a dumpster and maybe two. I'm not sure how many dumpsters will be there. This density does not fit with the neighborhood character. The old building had a very large backyard. So this plan, in addition to having a building that is about thirty-three or thirty-five percent bigger, would turn all that backyard, green space, into a parking lot covered with macadam. And I also wonder if all the new city councilors have made a site visit. I'm not sure if that's a requirement, but I just wonder about that. To conclude, I just ask myself, do the citizens of Gloucester have to accept whatever size building that a developer wants to build? To the developers, I say, "Please build something that fits the lot's size." And to you, city councilors, I say, "We have zoning laws that should protect us. Please use your vote to protect us." You know, when this plan went before the ZBA, several members of the zoning board said they were torn and I could see it in their faces in what they said as they described their vote, that they were torn about how to vote. But they decided to vote in favor of the plan. But tonight, if you are feeling torn, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please leave your statement? Thank you very much. Next, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Brenda Malloy, forty-three Rockin' Neck Ave. I live in East Gloucester, but I've come to speak against this proposal because it seems like so often there are developers proposing to build way bigger buildings than are really appropriate for the size of the property that they're on. And I don't know if it's that we've just got too much greed going on or what the deal is, but I think that the city council needs to consider, over and over again, coming before... is, but I think that the city council needs to consider, over and over again, coming before you, are people looking to build taller, wider, further back, obliterating all green space? For what purpose? Is it for the purpose of benefiting the city, or is it to benefit the pocketbook of the developer? I know a developer takes the risks when they build a piece of property, but in Gloucester, pretty much anything will sell. And are we willing to let developers propose whatever they want and get whatever exceptions they want through the zoning board simply because they want it? You know, this city is pretty prime, people love it, and there's going to be more and more places coming up that want to be developed. And over and over again, they want building exceptions, zoning exceptions. So I ask you to please consider that when you decide how to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Bushy. I reside at five Hesper Circle. Just want to say, having been a lifetime resident of Magnolia, born and raised, members of the council, residents who have interest in this project, I just ask everybody, please do not make a hasty decision to this project being thirty-five percent bigger, going from two bedrooms to six. I know I'm being redundant, but it's just too much for the neighborhood. I think everybody's in agreement that this building needs to be constructed, but constructed back to what it was, not three times the residential space. So please, please, just do not make a hasty decision just to push this thing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Dan Shaffet, twenty-two Flume Road, Magnolia. Congratulations to all you, I think everyone got elected. Am I wrong? I just found, I just found out when I was campaigning for Mr. O'Hara, and I was standing in the rain there, and Jamie gave me a little nod there. No tea, no hot coffee, this and that, but I was talking to Melissa Cox, and she made me realize you guys had to run every two years. So congratulations. I'm sorry I wasn't at the inaugural. Never got an invite by Jamie. Anyway, I want to tell you about my day today, very simple day in Magnolia. Decided to have a late breakfast, so I went up to Shirley's, the only breakfast place we have in Magnolia. And I go there, and there's a closed sign. And, oh, we're going to be closed for a couple weeks, this and that. And then one of the ladies came by, she goes, oh, you didn't know they were closed? We kind of talked about it, and we worked the deal, and this and that. And I go, all right, that works for me. So I said, I'll go get my mail. So I went over to the post office, and that's closed from twelve to one every day. And I should have known that, because I, it's been like that for fifty years. So I went over to the library, and across the street, went to, went to the basketball court, shot a couple hoops, went to the kitchen, stole an apple. Then I went home. I said, I'm going to take a nap at the Oceanside Hotel. So I went to the Oceanside Hotel. That's where I live. It's part of the largest hotel in the eastern seaboard at one time. And I tell you this, I tell you this little story about people talking about Magnolia being a village. It's not a village. It's smaller than a village. It is. These guys know what I'm talking about. It is. It isn't a village. It's something more special than that. So what I ask you, maybe on August eighth, we're having a Magnolia Square reunion. We'll probably have some kind of refreshments, get together, perhaps a naked jump off the pier afterwards. Please, I beg you, do not make Magnolia Square into Times Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition?
Reverend Richard Emanuel, one fifty-three East Main Street, Minister of the Church. The reason why I'm here is because the issues here tonight are the same issues that we had and still have in East Gloucester. We, in the same thing, is what is the density change that's taking place? What is the character of the neighborhood that's taking place? How does this affect tourism? Why do people come along one twenty-seven? It's a different texture of a drive to Cape Ann or to Gloucester than one twenty-eight. This building that is being proposed is massive. It's out of scale, as was the proposal for East Gloucester. And that isn't over yet because this council is going to have to defend itself in the land court. So in my opinion, the best proposal for this neighborhood site would be to restore, conserve, and protect the existing density as it was before the loss of the former structure. Please be advised that this communication is a request for the council to reject the proposal as it is presented. There is sufficient reason to challenge the tainted process of design changes between the ZBA and the city council P and D. The apparent tainted process does not meet the requirements of the council to proceed under its own rules, sections one point five, point one three of the Gloucester City Charter. To successfully grant a CC special permit, the city council must comply with the rules and the enforcement of the ordinances for which they are intended. The special council permits must meet the highest standards of following the laws because such permits represent the greatest impact of change. The special council permits set new precedents to the adjacent zoning and to adjacent proposals. The welfare of the community is found in the principles of restore, conserve, and protect, respectfully submitted. I have a copy for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that would just like to come up and say something about the property, say something about the neighborhood, not in opposition or not in Alrighty, seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
Yes, these communications were received from November twenty-sixth to date. In support are the one hundred and ninety-two individuals, the petition and postcards. Christopher Doe, twenty-two Magnolia Avenue. Lacey Rose Kaminsky, no address given. Christopher Dice, no address given. Kathleen Eunice, twenty-five Whitemore Street. Michaela Rogers, in the process of purchasing her own home in Magnolia. Dawn and Steve Caraway, Ward Two homeowners. Amy Huestad, forty-one Englewood Road. Jack and Kathy Scola, fifteen Ryan Road. Donna Azadon, Zoney, five Strawberry Cove. Mark Kirk, forty-one Englewood Road. Brad and Naomi Gillis, twenty-eight Lake Road. Elena Horn, one twenty-three Magnolia Avenue. Andrea Bent, no address given. Rachel Carr-Powich, Raymond Street. Stephanie O'Neil, twelve Norman Avenue. Stephen and Kathy Doe, twenty-six Lake Road. Jamie Highland, no address given. Jason Stanley, no address given. Carrie Anne Gallant, no address given. Kylie Davis, twenty-five Magnolia Avenue. Roland and Melissa Dudney, thirty Lake Road. And Peter Vines, eleven Magnolia Avenue. In opposition, Mary Lou Tierney, five Hesper Circle. Robert Duncan and Bonnie Duncan, three Hesper Circle. Carol Durka, seven Norman Avenue. Christine Silverstein, four Cliff Avenue. Clifford Amero, four Fuller Lane. Ellen and Andrew Saunus, five Cliff Road. John Ronan, five Magnolia Avenue. And Philip Muller, three Flume Road.
Thank you, Joanne. Alrighty, so now we are at councilor's questions. We have quite a few city staff here this evening, so feel free to utilize the staff. Council Holmgren?
I'd like to clarify the statement that opponent Mary Lou Tierney made regarding the septic tanks. Could somebody please tell me whether or not the old septic tanks are going to be reused or whether they are going to install new ones?
They're installing a new leaching field and essentially new piping, but they're keeping the old tanks, which have been approved by the Board of Health. And just for clarification, are we doing rebuttals?
Yes, we will.
Rebutts usually come after the opposition and for prior to questions.
Okay.
No, I think you should allow rebuttal.
All right, so we'll take a step back, and we will ask for rebuttals. Attorney Nester?
I will be brief, and I'll stick with the facts. Everybody here that is in favor and supports thirty-five Fuller Street, please stand up. Thank you.
Can you please stand? Barry, can you take a quick count of, oh. Yeah. Twenty-seven.
Alrighty. And just for the record, when I was listening to the communications, my count was between twenty and twenty-five in favor and approximately eight opposed. Let me clarify another fact. We submitted petition for a hundred and ninety-six names after we reduced the height to thirty-five feet. The hundred and forty names that Mr. McCarthy is talking about were collected when our original application was for forty feet. When we reduced it to thirty-five feet, Attorney Fine attempted to introduce that same set of petitions and was called on by attorney, by Michael Nyman, who asked, is this based on a forty-foot, or is this based on the thirty-five-foot reduction? She acknowledges the forty-five is the forty-foot. So I would submit those are inaccurate. Let me give another fact that's not accurate. A number of people stood up here and say that they would rather go back to the two thousand and sixteen plan that was approved, and which didn't go forward. You've got exhibit six in your packet, which shows the footprint for the two thousand and sixteen plan was three thousand one hundred and seventy-five feet. The footprint for our proposed plan is only two thousand six hundred and sixty-five feet, five hundred square feet less, that they seem to support. Another fact, the septic system was approved by the Board of Health. The parking lot was approved by the planning board. The stormwater drainage was approved by the planning board. There were six bedrooms in the old building. There only increased four bedrooms. It's the same flow because the size of the restaurant was reduced from thirty-two seats to sixteen seats, hence the offset. And no, it's not going to go flowing down the road into the harbor. The same thing applies to the mass of the building. Yes, I understand that most of the buildings, they're grandfathered, but I'm still pointing out, you complain, the opposition is complaining about density and mass. Eighty percent of the buildings there are over dense for the lot. The same, most of them have less green space than we will still have. Yes, it's a larger building, but yes, it conforms with the other things. It conforms with the traffic. When the old building was there, thirty-five Fuller, there was no off-street parking. There was two apartments, they had the traffic. We have put all that off-street. Again, I would submit, the Surf Restaurant is gone, the Edgewater Cafe is gone, Bradley's Liquor Store is gone. Please tell me how adding six condominium units increases the traffic over what was there with three commercial units. And yes, I feel the pain for the Congregational Church, but the same issue becomes is the Congregational Church has no parking. They park on both sides of the street, both Sunday and Saturday. And so they're against us for putting all our cars on a parking lot. And I will just leave it at that. I would submit that the application complies with all the six criteria. The application complies with the dimensional. And just for the record, I briefly looked at the photograph that Attorney Fine provided for seventeen Rogers Street. I'm trying to look on the assessments data, but I'm willing to bet the farm that that footprint is larger than two thousand six hundred and sixty-five square feet, which is what we're looking for. So I would say that you cannot take that as proof positive that this is what the building is going to look like. You've seen what the building is going to look like. You've seen the drawings. It looks clearly nothing like that. It fits more in with this community. It fits more with the village. It brings back more housing, which we need, and it fits right into Magnolia Square. I never said Lexington Avenue was the biggest. Magnolia Square has the businesses. And I would submit this is another business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Opposition, who would you like to rebut? If you so wish. It's, if you wish to, you can.
So my understanding of rebuttal is that, is to comment on the testimony that you've heard and not to repeat the same arguments that I made the first time. I don't envy the position that you all find yourselves in. You've got people with strong feelings on both sides, people have come out to multiple I do agree with what Carol said, that if you're torn, lean toward no. So many times, it's been my experience that public officials approve something, and then when it goes up, often they say, sometimes aloud, I wish I had that one back. If you approve this for this square, you're going to change the square forever, and you're not going to be able to get it back. I think there've been a lot, every application that's been submitted has been incorrect, incorrect in big ways, incorrect in material ways. The numbers have kept changing. The parking numbers keep changing. Now we find out that the septic system has questions. There are too many questions here for you to approve this. And so, again, I would ask you to turn this down, let the developers go back to the drawing board. They've never submitted any, any evidence at all that this is uneconomic, not at all. They've never submitted a shred of evidence that this parking works. They've never submitted a single document that proves that the Magnolia House of Pizza is going to open there, not once. Even though this comes up, meeting after meeting, we have asked for evidence and have gotten zero. So trust yourselves, trust your gut. I hope you're hearing what the people who actually live in that neighborhood say, and vote it down.
Thank you, Meredith. Alrighty, rebuttals have been heard. Now we're on to councilor questions. Councilor Cox? Didn't you? Yeah, Councilor Cox?
Um, oh, boy, where do I start? I have one, I have two questions. Do you want me to just do one at a time, or do we want to go around?
If there's anybody else who have any questions? John? Jamie? Yeah, why don't you do the first one, and then we'll come back to you.
Attorney Nester, one of your claims in the application is a considerable improved for utility and other public service. Can you define... Can you define that?
Number one, we have a new septic system. Number two, we have a new stormwater system to allow the stormwater to be contained within the lot versus the runoff down Norman Avenue, across the square, down Raymond Street, which gets treacherous in the wintertime, which is why one of the things that was done about 10 years ago, initially they put stop signs at all four corners of Magnolia Square, but because the water was freezing on Raymond Avenue right by the Magnolia Variety, they changed that from a stop sign to a yield so they can continue to move, that rather they're getting stuck on that. We have a sprinkler system, and I would submit, we have off-street parking, so that, that include, that takes care of the utilities. It's a brand-new system, brand-new electrical system, brand-new plumbing system, and I would submit that's enough to, to address those issues.
And you, you've been granted Board of Health of not having to change out the septic.
Yes, I believe it's Exhibit 8 in the packet, which is the letter from the Board of Health granting us for 20, for, in fact, they granted for 10-bedroom unit and 25 seats. We're only going to have 16 seats in the restaurant. So we're going below what they granted.
My other, only other question is about parking. Do it.
Do it.
There's been a lot of questions about parking, the number of parking spots. I, I've always understood that it's one and a half parking spots per unit.
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be a total of nine?
That's correct.
Parking spots required for the housing, and no parking spots are required for the restaurant?
The ZBA has granted their variance that we can have, or continue to have, on-street parking.
Okay.
So we only need nine. We've got 12.
Okay. 12 or 11?
12. Issue become, which was raised regarding whether we do trash barrels along the side of the building, or if we do a dumpster on there. Number one is, the restaurant is all, is paper, so you're not going to have a lot of large bulks type of situation. When the suggestion was made, and we would accept it as, as a, as a special condition of the city, for the city council, if they would rather have us a dumpster, instead, instead of 12, have 11 in the parking for, have, have one for the dumpster and 11 for the parking, we would accept it. But right now, the plan that was approved by the planning board was for 12, although it's three more than we actually need, because we're talking about doing barrels on the side with, with quite regular trash pickup. But there were some issues raised about it potentially doing a dumpster. If we did, if we did a dumpster, we would agree if the city council could make a special condition, and we put over where the handicap is and move the handicap over one. So it'd be in the corner for easier access. With that, we would defer to the, to the will of the council.
And explain to me again where you're putting the trash barrels if you don't get a dumpster?
We put on, on the, you probably, part of, part of them would be on the, on the back, between the restaurant, and the other part would probably for the, for the residents around the corner. We haven't formally fixed out where the spec, where the specialty would go, and if we did anything like that, we'd have a fence around them so they'd be, you wouldn't see them. They'd be passive type of situation. Again, it, it's paper, it's commercial pickup. We're not going to take purple bags and drop them on the street every Friday.
Well, I would hope not, seeing that you're over four units.
Right, so, no, it's getting picked up.
Allowed.
It's getting picked up.
Okay.
Okay? We may in fact have daily pickup. That's, that's going to be determined.
Counselor McCarthy.
I have a question for Greg Catamatory.
Good evening.
Good evening. Greg, several times it's been brought up in these hearings about the Pizza Palace. If we approve this permit as it stands right now, it would be a commercial space, and to change that from a commercial to, say, a residential, they would have to come before who to, to change that?
Before the city council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the way the permit will be approved, there will be a commercial space. We can't say whether it's a Pizza Palace, but we can say it's a commercial space the way this permit, if approved, would be.
Yes, so there are some parameters that were included in the zoning board's relief for the commercial use, as been, as been pointed out by Attorney Nester regarding the amount of seating, the parking relief. And again, the use category that's being applied for is a newer conversion of a six-unit residential mixed-use building. If there were additional units that were going to be proposed, they'd be moved into another use category and have to come back before the council for a special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
I have a question just dealing with the timeline on when the building fire took place to where we are today. I don't know who from the administration I saw. The building inspector here, I don't know if he's still here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not quite sure I understand what that question.
Understood. So the original timeframe, there's been questions asked, of me anyways, dealing with the original fire, and as far as the time period where the building could be rebuilt, seeing it was a total loss, to where we are today, from, obviously, versus falling into the building or ordinances that we have in place today.
Okay, so our ordinance allows us up to three years to replace a building. However, during that time, it's also considered that you have to go through process to change things, that you've already started the rebuilding, so you just had to start your process of permitting within the three years, in which this did. It went back to the zoning board, was applied for permits within the three years, so that kept the grandfather in place. So we're still working under that same building that was destroyed by the fire.
Thank you.
Is there any more councilor questions? Counselor Pat.
Yes, I have two questions, and maybe Attorney Nester could answer the first, and this is about the affordable housing unit that's going to be included. Would you just give us a little bit more? Personally, myself, I, I like to think of affordable housing as workforce housing, you know, as people that, say, are working here, have grown up here, live here, can still stay here, versus the, where we're thrown into the, the Boston area for, you know, income. Is there any specific proposal?
We, no, we fall under the greater Boston metro area, which I discussed with, with Greg Catamatory before we started it, which is why the condition was that we would deal with the planning board to determine what affordable housing would go in there based on the criteria for income and the criteria for, for the, what you can charge type of situation. But it's, I will concede it's higher because it's in the greater Boston metropolitan one, but that's, that's the one, but it will still be significantly less, I anticipate, but we don't have prices yet because we're not going to stop doing.
But also, that's the question. This is going to be deeded in there. It can't be changed when the unit is sold or anything.
No, no, it's deed restricted in perpetuity, unlike other ones where you put a 10-year timeframe and then it can revert. This unit will stay with the building as long as the building is standing.
Thank you. The other question, I don't know if we have a, whether, who would actually answer, but when we're talking about the traffic and traffic increase, and I've heard from residents or whatever, all of us, many of us, including, you know, counselors here, live in the neighborhood about traffic increase and what this is, this project is going to do, and yet, that was one of the things that I had looked at when I talked to, you know, within, say, the, the police department, the fire department, et cetera, what type of, you know, traffic issues are there there? And they did refer to the, the event they had for the pier, and that there were no complaints. And so I'm just wondering, where is the, what data or something, yeah, I don't know who that's from saying, if you can, maybe Meredith, you could, I'd like, I'd just like to hear what the numbers are, you know, where we're getting data or something to do that.
Meredith Fine, I would love some data, all in favor of that, but what we're picturing here is not a one-night event like they had for the pier, okay? What you have to picture, what the residents who live there are picturing, is that corner where the takeout's going to be, okay? So there's a lot that's going to be happening in that corner, and the more successful that restaurant is, the worse it's going to get. You're going to have people going in and out of that parking lot. You're going to have people running in and out of their cars, leaving their cars there to run in, get their pizza, run out. You've got people going around the circle. You've got, you're going to have, you've got to picture what it's actually going to look like. You've got a bus stop there. You've got four lanes of traffic. You've got people parking on both sides of the street. You've, I wish there were data. I wish somewhere, at some point along the way, somebody had said, "Prove this, show this," right, to the applicant, which I think should be expected of an applicant of a project this size. But what the neighbors are telling you, and what I'm privileged to, what I'm privileged to communicate to you on their behalf is, that corner is going to be real tough, real tough, the more successful that restaurant gets.
Thank you.
Counsel, has, has there anybody that, ask a question that hasn't spoken yet? Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our planning director to come up again, Greg Catamatory, please. And as you come up, I also wanted to just thank all city staff, because this is your third meeting that you've been to, and we totally appreciate it, so thank you. So I have questions on the first comments that were made by Meredith Fine, and it was information that occurred before what is in front of us, but it's information that continues to come up, and you had described it at one of our P and D meetings. Can you just describe briefly, just a little bit about the dimensional setbacks, and also about the parking spaces in terms of the planning board's role in those approvals for us?
Sure. So clearly, the dimensional relief that's been requested, there's, there's two kind of bodies that are reviewing it. The zoning board reviewed certain relief, and then the council has some purview over two specific dimensions related to this project. So I'm not sure exactly what, what you want me to evaluate, you know, in, in terms of the dimensional relief that's required, but the planning board was, was referred, the application under site plan review, because of the mixed-use nature of it. It meets a threshold of, of greater than 2,000 square feet of commercial space, and did review it kind of as a new application, and specifically reviewed the aspects of compliance with the zoning ordinance, to the extent that there was, was an other relief granted, which really relates to the parking that's, that's been proposed, as well as stormwater management system that was also reviewed by the engineering department. So there, there definitely, you know, there's, there's confidence that they, they've done what they can do to collect stormwater drainage on the site, which may otherwise not be contained at this point. It does introduce new impervious surface, but that, again, is being collected in the system. The Board of Health obviously has the purview over onsite septic systems, so I'm, I'm confident that whatever is, is constructed will meet their requirements. And relating to the parking, again, the design engineer is here as well, John Judd, who made the presentation to the planning board about the functional design, meeting the compliance of aisle width, as well as stall width for, for the parking, that will provide for those, those folks using that, that lot, which I, my understanding is a private lot for the folks that might live there, will be able to enter and exit, just as, as anyone, actually, as maybe not most people can do, that might have to back out onto a street. They will be able to, to head out onto Norman Ave. So I don't know what else additionally you'd like me to address.
That's helpful, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Holmgren, did you have another question?
Counselor Payson, this may be, be for you, but I just want to clarify, with a project of this scope, does there need to be statutorily a traffic impact study or an environmental impact study?
Not that I'm aware of, statutorily.
Thank you.
Counselor Cox.
Attorney Nester. There was a request made for a public bathroom. Is this facility, because it's primarily takeout with some seating, are they going to offer a public restroom? Highly unlikely?
Um, I would.
Possibly?
I would say more, I, I don't think we're going to have bathroom guardians standing in front of the doors saying, "Are you buying something there or not?", just based on the way of the layout. I don't envision a sign being put up saying, "Private only," but I don't anticipate we're going to be encouraging public, because it is a private facility, not to mention it's the traffic, because we have six units of housing residents there, so I'm sure that they don't want to have a troop, a massive troop of the public going through it.
Is the parking in back for the residents only?
Yes.
Okay, so the commercial space, for the people attending to the commercial space, they were not going to be using the parking lot?
No, just residents only, the commercial.
So there's, there's not going to be increase of in and out due to the commercial property?
Nope, private, it's, it's. It's private parking, private lot, residents only.
Okay. Staff parking is, again, that's just residents?
Just the residents, staff parking on the street like it always has been. I suspect there'll be reduced amount of staff because we've, we've shrunk the size of, of the restaurant.
And the only other thing that came up in conversation that hasn't been addressed, retail always being the restaurant.
Yes.
The retail space is going to be designed for a restaurant?
Designed for a restaurant. The layout of the plans are, it's for, it's for a restaurant. I believe when you saw, when you look at the overlay, it shows a layout of the first floor for a restaurant, which reduces the number of seats to 16. And as, I agree that if we want to change that for any reason, we'd have to come before the city council for change of use.
And I do have to say, in your application, you did pull at heartstrings and name businesses as far as, you know, the beloved Magnolia House of Pizza and stuff like that. I just think that's inappropriate in an application, because we don't know that that is going to be the true business, and it's, we don't know that it's actually going to forever be the business. So I, I would just.
I would, I apologize for that.
I, I feel like that's just not.
Do we know it?
Do have one more question regarding the zoning for Greg Catamatory.
Counsel O'Hara, did you have a question?
Okay.
Oh, there we go. Yes.
Mark, could you explain as far as the roof line? Is that the, say, the top of it? Is it flat roof? Does it come to a?
I've got Ryan from Red Barn. I'd prefer that he, that's out of my, my pay grade, but he can, he's the architect, so he can explain the roof.
Thank you.
Ryan McSharr, Red Barn Architecture. With the massing of the building, what we'll show from the street side is a pitched roof on all four sides. There is a flat spot on top where we have recessed a piece of it, so we can put HVAC equipment up there, but for all intents and purposes, the building from the street view will look like a sloped roof building.
The, you had said the air conditioners? They go, they go on the rooftop?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Counselor Cox.
Greg? You should really organize this better. Sorry, you're getting your steps in.
Sorry, I bring the laptop, because I never know what you're going to ask me.
So I was asked, or I was told, that residential units were not allowed on the bottom floor of a commercial mixed-use building. Can you clarify?
There isn't language like that in a neighborhood business district, which allows both commercial and residential uses. There are some neighborhood business lots that are single-family homes. There are some that are two families. We do have a specific, specific standard for the central business district that requires that there's commercial use on the first floor.
And that's, that's the downtown?
That's the downtown area, yes.
Main Street?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you so much.
All righty, do we have any more councilor questions? Counselor Gilman. Counselor Gilman.
I've got one for Attorney Nestor, thank you. So, we, most, all of us went to the site visit, and got a feel for the location, the details. Exactly how many feet extra from the existing location is the new width of the building? I know that you're gonna dig into that area where that little house is.
Which, which, taking away that, I, I think we, we go 30 feet?
Was it 16 feet from the existing building?
You see what I can look at, because unfortunately, it's on the screen, which we can't get, hang on.
16 feet. Thank you.
When you saw it, it was gonna be on the far left-hand side of the, of that shed that's going away.
Thank you.
Any more counsel questions? All righty, I'm gonna, oh, Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you, I have a question for Meredith Fine, please. This picture, this picture that you gave to all of us, can you, can you explain again how this relates to the project, please?
Sure, happy to. That's a picture I took this afternoon. That building is on Rogers Street. It's next to Minglewood Tavern, right.
Do you know the address?
17 Rogers Street. And the reason I'm showing it to you is that it's the same floor plan, 84, 8,400 square feet of floor plan, on three floors. And so, it, in my opinion, it has the same mass. Of course, it doesn't look the same that this building would look, of course. But I, I've had, I feel like I haven't done a perfect job of communicating to you what we mean by mass, that this is gonna be a big building, and so I looked through the city's records to find a building that was comparable in size. And so, that's why I proposed this, that's why I brought it tonight.
So, square footage-wise, side, length, width, height?
So, both of them have, the one on Rogers Street has 36 square feet more. It's essentially the same, 8,400 square feet of floor space. They are essentially the same size and three floors. And so, that's what I was trying to represent with that, with that photograph, is that people keep saying it's gonna be the same as it used to be, and it's, it's really not.
So, what was, in your estimation, what was the square footage of the building that burned?
It was 6-something. It was 6774. And the new building will be 8411. That's, so that's the gross floor plan inside the building.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Meredith, I have a quick question for you, now that you're here. I just looked up on our city website, and it says the total living area at 17, 17 Rogers Street is 19,257 square feet.
So, this is the, this is the, I was looking at the property card for 17, 17 Rogers?
I have it right here on my, my, my city website, and I have the same building, and it says 19,200, 19,257 square feet.
Can I approach, may I approach the bench?
Absolutely, yeah. Help yourself. I just, I just don't want you to have... So, scratch, scratch this, this is wrong, this rendition of 17.
So, just, just for the tape?
Yeah.
I still do think that the front of the building represents what the, what the size of this building would look like. I recognize that it may go farther back than I had realized, and I apologize for my mistake.
Just wanted to make a clarification, so, we're comparing apples to apples here and not...
No, listen.
Yeah, there's no ill will, I just wanted to make sure that...
No, no, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna complain about the incorrect numbers from the applicant, and then present you with incorrect numbers.
Okay, Counsel Pat.
Yeah, just a quick question, and maybe the architect could answer this for us. And it's reference to what we were looking at there, and I understand the, the visual of a three-story building, et cetera, approximately the same height, but when you were talking about what this is going to look like to those people that are traversing or live in the neighborhood, et cetera, you're talking about a pitched roof that has a space, now, the pitched roof goes up, and it is basically covering all the air conditioning units or whatever, so you would not be able to see anything. It's not a flat roof, it's a pitched roof, so it's not the same type of viewpoint, say, as a, that same height appearance.
I would agree with that, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more counsel questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Just wanna clarify something based on Counsel O'Hara's question. I've been told that the dimensions of 17 Rogers Street is 126 by 64. Our dimensions are 70 by 30. Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Thank you, Counselor. On a motion by Counsel Holgrum, seconded by Counsel Lumberg, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council grant a special council permit, Special Council Permit 2019-004 to Beaufort Shores LLC for property at 35 Fuller Street, MAP 168, Lot 14, zoned NBR 20, Neighborhood Business, Low-Medium Density Residential, to erect a structure under GZO Sections 1.8.3, Section 2.3.1.7, in parentheses, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six dwelling units consisting of four two-bedroom and two one-bedroom residential condominium units, with one of the one-bedroom condominium units in perpetuity, a deed-restricted affordable housing unit. Under Section 3.2.2, Footnote A, minimum lot space per dwelling unit, and Section 3.2.2A, minimum open space per dwelling unit as follows. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit, total allowed 10,000 square foot each unit. Total proposed 9,792 square feet, granted, 50,208 plus or minus square feet. Next line, minimum open space per dwelling unit, total allowed 7,500 square feet each unit, total proposed 4,835 square feet. Granted, 40,165 plus or minus square feet pursuant to amended plans received by the Gloucester City Clerk dated October 29, 2019, rendered by Gateway Consultants, Inc., Gloucester, Mass, as signed by John Judd, PE, and Red Barn Architects, Ipswich, Mass, signed by Ryan McShara, RA. This special council permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. One, the dumpster should be permanently screened and maintained. Two, HVAC condensers will be housed above the third floor, permanently screened and maintained, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Counsel, I, I'd like to make two amendments.
Go ahead.
And this is consistent with what was discussed at our November 26 meeting. I move to amend the minimum open space per dwelling unit by striking total proposed 4,835 square feet, and total granted 40,165 plus or minus square feet, and by adding total proposed 1,348 square feet, and total granted 43,642 plus or minus square feet, and ISO move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This revised open space calculation of 1,348, as opposed to the 4,835 square feet, was requested in the letter from the applicant's attorney, Mark Nestor, on November 26. The initial application of 4,835 square feet included the side parking lot in its calculation of the dimensional special council permit requirement to decrease the minimum open space per dwelling unit per 3.2.2, Footnote A.
All righty, it's been, motion's been on the floor, and it's been seconded. Does everybody understand what the vote is, what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Gilman.
I move to strike Conditions 1 and 2, and add Condition Number 1. Owner shall screen, contain, maintain, and repair the dumpster and HVAC equipment.
I, thank you, I already moved it.
It's been moved and seconded, any, any discussion?
The narrative is, this modified wording was acceptable to the applicant and the administration after the final P and D meeting on November 20, 2019.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, Counsel Cox.
Clarification, why does it say applicant and administration? What, what does the administration have to do with this part of it?
It was really between the city council and applicant, so I should've said that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, does everybody understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Gilman.
So, counselors, here's the narrative, it's a little bit long, so bear with me. It, it's a little bit long, particularly in fairness to the new counselors, who were not a part of this last year, although you were at most of the meetings, which we appreciate. At P and D on November 6, 2019, the applicant discussed dimensional setbacks, parking lot approved with adequate turnaround, approved by the planning board. Height reduction from 40 to 35 feet on August 8, 2019, approved by the ZBA. On-site wastewater system approved by Board of Health on January 22, 2019, and on file. Landscape screening between the borders of Number 35 and Number 33 Fuller Street, a provision for stormwater runoff drainage system on file, and approved by Concom and Planning Board. The applicant then reviewed the special council matters, permit matters that are in front of the council. Attorney Nestor summarized GZO Section 1.8.3, standards to be applied, Section 2.3.1.7, conversion to a new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six units. Also discussed was the decrease in both minimum lot size and open space covered under special council permit, 3.2.2A dimensional requirement. We agreed that a site visit would be useful, with the goal of observing the structural density and neighborhood character of 35 Fuller Street and its Magnolia Square surroundings was warranted. The site visit was held on November 16, 2019, it was well-attended by seven or nine city counselors, in addition to close to 25 Magnolia neighbors. Counselors looked closely at the lot and open space of the abutting properties, as well as the dimensions of the proposed building. It was noted that 35 Fuller Street is located in a Neighborhood Business District, the residential use follows the nearest residential standards, in this case, it is R20. At our next November 20, 2019, P and D meeting, we asked the applicant to further review the open space and lot area per dwelling unit of the abutting properties in this mixed-use village area, as referenced on Revision 7A. We noted that the majority of the abutting properties were built on non-conforming lots for both open space and dwelling unit. We also heard from our planning director, Greg Catimatory. Greg clarified numerous modifications related to the mechanics of this project, however, those matters were outside the purview of city council. This included stormwater runoff and grading changes in the parking lot. At that time, P and D voted unanimously that the special permit meets the requisite criteria of GZO Section 2.3.1 for a multifamily project of six units. The standards to be applied is required by GZO Section 1.8.3, for the proposed use of the property located at 35 Fuller Street will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and that the proposed use by the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district, or the city, to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects of said use, as highlighted in these six factors, including, one, social, economic, or community need. This project will provide increased housing opportunities for Gloucester, including a one-bedroom deed-restricted affordable housing unit in perpetuity, and allow for the potential re-establishment of a popular commercial business in Magnolia Square. Two, traffic flow and safety. The proposal provides for an off-site parking for 11 cars for the proposed residential use, and reduces the ground-floor use to one commercial business unit in the building as restaurant use with limited seating to minimize the intensity of use. Three, adequacy of utilities and public services. The proposed use is predominantly served by private utilities, and features a new onsite wastewater system approved by the Board of Health, a stormwater management system approved by the planning board, and the proposed building will have a fire suppression sprinkler system. There is adequate public water supply, and the applicant proposes improvements to the adjacent sidewalks with ADA compliance. Next, neighborhood character. This project has been designed to blend in with the mixed-use and diverse character of Magnolia Square. Next, qualities of natural environment. This project will be improved with the new systems. Finally, potential fiscal impact. This project will see an increase to the real estate tax base, potential meals taxes, and the employment opportunities with a new commercial use. Our P and D vote also affirmed that the decrease of two-dimensional requirements under GZO Section 3.2.2, Footnote A, minimum open space per dwelling unit, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit was in keeping with the structural density and neighborhood character. Our new counselors are up to speed on the special council permit, they've read the minutes, they've visited the site, they've read all the documents provided by Attorney Nestor. Counselors, I also have in front of you, you have 1.8.3, you have 3.2.2A, and we've all looked at Exhibit 7A, as revised and presented on November 26, 2019. And at this point, with the permission of our council president, I'd like to walk counselors through the discussion part of this special council permit.
All righty, thank you, Counselor Gilman. Counselor Gilman is obviously our chair of our P and D, so if any counselors have any questions they'd like to run by her before we take a vote, I'm sorry, the, the discussions on the impact of the neighborhood, 1.8.3, feel free.
Thank you, Counselor. So, tonight, we're gonna have a rigorous discussion whether we believe that the special permit for 35 Fuller Street meets the requisite criteria of GZO Section 2.3.1 for multifamily project of six units. I encourage counselors to focus in this discussion of what is in front of us today, tonight, not what's already been approved by planning board and ZBA. It's our first charge as counselors to determine if the proposed use of this property required by GZO Section 1.8.3 will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. I do not wish that we begin discussing if we approve it or not at this point, I wanna make sure that we have a good conversation about these factors. So, based... So, based on the applicant's testimony and public hearing process, I'd like to see us comment on each of these six factors, if you feel comfortable. Number one, social, economic, or community need. So, who'd like to weigh in and talk with that? Counsel Holgrom?
I'd just like to speak to the affordable piece. Sandy, I do appreciate your sentiments, and I share them. I understand that the applicant does not have to build any affordable units based upon the number of units that are being built, so I do appreciate that they are trying to address a community need. They are not required to build any affordable units, and the fact that they are willing to take this step will hopefully help some family or individuals in the neighborhood. And I also want to thank the applicant for installing sprinklers because the building will be safer.
Thank you. Go ahead. On that one question?
Sure.
Yep.
I would like to thank the applicant for, again, including the affordable housing unit. I would hope that along the way, it would be what I feel is truly affordable, but just the fact that it's being included in the current standards is, and it's not required to be included in this application, I think it's tremendous. We need that in the community. I'm also happy that, again, just to see a project to go forward to, number one, increase taxes, not only on the residential but on the restaurant, on the business side from meals tax or whatever, and obviously to gain some employment back in the community. So, I want to thank the applicant for that.
Thank you. Counselor Nolan?
On A, I believe that with the retail space, place for people to eat and meet, it's going to create more housing opportunities. I do love the idea of one being deeded affordable forever. And jobs. There's going to be a few extra jobs there for some kids that are in school that are going to get a job. They don't have to travel to Gloucester. They want to work at a counter or the sandwich shop or whatever comes out of it. I think that there's a good social, economic, and community need there.
Counselor McCarthy? Yep, there you go.
We talked about needing more housing. This is more housing. This is six units of more housing, one affordable, one deeded affordable, perpetually deeded affordable. And many times during the election, I said that we need to be able to facilitate our aging population. The fact that this building's going to have elevators in it and sprinkler systems, I think, is a perfect fit for people moving into retirement years. And the fallout of that might be that Gloucester people buy the houses, and it creates more on-the-market houses for people moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara?
I grew up in that building. Age six, started delivering newspapers. I'm 58 years old. When, when, when that building at age six and for many, many, many years, that building was known as Doc's. Doc lived over on the second floor. Typically, his son lived on the third floor. Again, I grew up in that neighborhood. I live in that neighborhood. We are now talking about six units additional above the restaurant. I am truly concerned for the character of the neighborhood. Yes, we need housing, or that's the claim, but we also have to look at the reality of what was there and how this, how this will impact the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. Counselor Memhard?
At this point, we're looking at a business and housing in Magnolia Square that was lost in a fire, and it was an important part of the community at that time. I think we've suffered long enough with the vacant lot that is there today. Following up when Counselor McCarthy spoke about the housing, really any new housing that we're building here is going to take some pressure off the housing shortage. It's going to address a need and demand so that I think that from a social, economic, and community need, this project advances the community and the neighborhood.
Thank you, Counselor Memhard. Counselor Cox?
Six units, one affordable, homeownership. Doesn't mean that the home ownership won't turn into rentals. I could see some problems there, but we have a shortage of housing, but if the housing is going to be at a value in which most can't afford, is it really useful housing? So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways to look at social, economic, and community needs on this one. I'm for more housing, but having it attainable is another question.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. No, go ahead.
So, one of the things I wanted to add to this factor is when I went to the housing symposium, and we talked a lot about the need for housing in the $250,000 to $500,000 ballpark. I think at that point, Ruth Pino, who's here, who's a real estate agent, there's like seven properties in all of Gloucester right now, and that's it. So, I'm delighted that this particular unit would bring six new condominiums for people that are looking for that starter house or retirement place with an elevator, as Counselor McCarthy said. And so, I think that this particular unit, this particular need is well satisfied.
Alrighty. I'm going to echo my fellow counselors with the housing, the commercial space. It's going to bring a couple of jobs, but I'm going to paint a quick picture of the neighborhood. You know, we have Sherri's Cafe up the street, which is doing fantastic for the neighborhood. It's bringing people from all over the city to, her, her, her social media presence is bringing people into downtown Magnolia, our forgotten borough for the longest time. It's becoming a lot more vibrant over the past couple of years than it has in the past. I have a friend of mine that has just taken over Magnolia 525. I follow his social media account and what he's trying to do with his restaurant. I have a friend of mine that just opened a little florist shop and a little boutique on the same street, the farmer's market that has been implemented in Magnolia over the past couple of years. It's, it's vibrant. We have a beach. We have a couple restaurants in the neighborhood. We have a store in the neighborhood. So, I think the economic and social impact is going to be, is going to benefit the surrounding neighborhood and the, and the surrounding restaurants, the surrounding stores, and to have that additional housing. I know my daughter's looking for a home, and she, she's probably going to have to move out of town because we don't have enough housing in Gloucester. So, that's my point. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. The next factor we want to talk about as a council is traffic flow and safety.
Counselor Pat?
Just a couple of comments on that. I'm not sure that I'm understanding, maybe because I don't live there. Counsel O'Hara, Counselor Nolan have, you know, spent their lives there, but I'm not sure I understand where the traffic issue is a problem. I think, again, just like Council President just said, it's good to be, for the neighborhood to become more vibrant and things happening. If there's a couple of extra cars that are coming through and maybe supply vehicles or something, but I don't see any issue with that safety, and I'm very happy to see that the, the building is going to have that fire suppression system. That will make quite a bit of difference for safety issues, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Holgrom?
I don't have much to add beyond emphasizing that, again, there did not need to be a traffic study, and I sympathize with people's concerns. Traffic is a problem everywhere. Traffic safety is a problem everywhere, but the building that burned down unfortunately did not have any off-street parking whatsoever, so any residents had to find on-street parking like everybody else, and now there will at least be private off-street parking for those residents.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nolan?
I see little to no change in traffic on this. I grew up there. I live there. I, I drive through the square probably 10, 15 times a day on test drives, going in and about the neighborhood. With the off-street parking of 12 spots or 11 spots, you know, I, I really don't see it being an issue. I think it may be safer than before because we had multiple people living in the building with no off-street parking besides one spot. And there was, now there's access for people to have a parking lot for people that are going to reside there and be able to turn around in the parking lot and drive out. The only traffic issues that we actually have in that area, larger events at the library or the Saturday night AA meetings, which is great. It's, it's, it's perfect, but I don't see any, any real change due to this, and I don't think that the traffic and flow will have any, any bearing on the community on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
I first want to say that I did take a site visit at the invitation of Counselor Nolan yesterday, but I do frequent Magnolia quite a bit. I own property in Magnolia, and I'm over there at least once a week. And I don't see this causing any issue with traffic. If anything, I think that reducing from three commercial units to one commercial unit, in all probability, the traffic impact will be less than what was there before. I've spent a lot of time patrolling that area. I just finished a long career in law enforcement here in Gloucester, and I don't really remember any issues with, with traffic in that area. I think the off-street parking supplied by this project will alleviate the residents as compared to what was there before. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Hara?
Compared to, obviously, what's there now and what was there, there can't help but to be increased traffic. You would hope that, that there wouldn't be, but with 10, 10 bedrooms, six units, typical homes today have minimum two cars. You have employees of the restaurant that will, will be there, and you also have the patrons of the restaurant. So, to say that there's not going to be increased traffic, I think, is a fallacy. There will be increased traffic as in all parts of Gloucester. You deal with it. And is that any way that we, the city, should be facing increased traffic by just saying, "Deal with it"? I don't know. I don't think that's right. I think we have to look at the reality, and we have to manage traffic. We have to be responsible, counselors, in a responsible city, and we have to look at ordinances and look at traffic flow, how that will impact everybody and our city.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Memhard?
Magnolia Square is certainly a busy locale, but it's no more or less busy than other intersections in the, in the community. We're delivering ice to Magnolia Variety across the street from that location, and we park on the street. I, I remember attending many events for the Gloucester Fisheries Association over the years at the Surf Restaurant. It's a big social center for Gloucester and for Magnolia. Communities change. Life changes a little bit year by year. I don't think that this is going to be a adverse impact with, with no surf restaurant there. There's a beautiful park there instead. There's off-street parking there. This is just a change. It's, 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 it's not something that I think is going to cause hardship on the community.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cox?
I think the traffic flow is definitely going to increase just based on the obvious reasons of the higher units, but when an applicant comes before you and offers more parking than what is required at the cost of open space, you have to, you have to respect that, at least for providing enough parking for the unit. Even if there's two cars per unit, six units, 12 spots, and that would be the max that they could afford in regards to their space. I live downtown. My neighbor has a extremely large fence that divides our two driveways. There are four cars in my parking area alone because the house behind mine also uses my driveway. We have to approach the sidewalk in a very slow manner in order to make sure that we're not impeding anybody walking around. It happens every single morning, every single night. So far, knock on wood, we haven't run over anybody. It, it's a matter of how you approach the intersections and everything else, and I would hope the neighborhood and the people driving in your neighborhood would be respectful as they are in mine, in most cases. As far as delivery trucks and stuff like that, yes, there's going to be increase. Anybody that's ever driven downtown is also feeling that impact. The loading zones that we have currently don't fit the type of vehicles that are delivering. So, in most cases, they're not even in the loading zone because they're too big. What happens is people slow down. They take turns, and, you know, sure, there's probably some record of some accidents somewhere and people rushing to get to and fro, but it typically slows down the traffic, not increases the speed of it. So, I'm, I'm very pleased to see what's been done, and I, and I do hope that we, that we do not see any failures from, from this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gilman?
I have nothing to add.
Alrighty, I'll touch on it. We have several beaches in our town. One of them is Stinky Beach. It's going to be discovered. People are going to end up going over to Magnolia Beach. Like I stated earlier, we have the, the store across the street. We have a church without any parking. This off-street parking is essential to this building. We have restaurants in the neighborhood. We have a yoga studio in the neighborhood. So, I don't think there's really going to be, as one of the counselors said, there's traffic everywhere. I know we're not trying to just say, "Deal with it." I did, I did a job on Trask Street today where they shut Bass Avenue down. Talk about a nightmare.
Trask and Bass, the Bass do not even intersect.
I mean, Hart Street. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, Hart, Hart Street and Bass Avenue, and it was just, we had a detail out there. It's, 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 it's inevitable, no matter where we go, and I hate to say that we have to deal with it, but we're going to have to figure something out in the future with traffic. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, counselors. We're almost halfway through. The next item that I'd like us to discuss is adequacy of utilities and public services.
Counselor Pat?
The only thing I have is a comment that, according to the Board of Health and the zoning board and the planning board, we've met the needs. The proponent here has met the needs for everything, for their utilities and public services, and I appreciate, even though, I guess apparently they're using the old tanks, that it's a totally new systems that are being put in, and I really appreciate the, within utilities- And, uh, I really appreciate the, uh, within, uh, utilities, uh, I include that, uh, fire suppression system. Um, that makes a big difference, um, for, uh, response time. Um, I know Consul O'Hara worked for years to make sure that we had, uh, an open fire station, uh, in Magnolia. Uh, response times, um, save lives and fire suppression systems also do. So just want to make sure that we, uh, acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Holmgren.
I have nothing further to add.
Consul Nolan.
I think that as far as the, the supply by city water, which is, is fairly adamant, private power, which is adamant, um, the fire protection is excellent. They have the suppression system plus the fire department down the street, which is open thanks to a lot of work and a lot of good people. Um, the, uh, do an approved septic system, the drainage plan with a retention area makes a big difference and, um, I think that as far as the utilities in other public services, this meets and exceeds the expectation. Actually does exceed what the allowable water rate is on the sewer system.
Thank you, Consular. Consul McCarthy.
I have nothing to add. Uh, I think it's Holmgren covered.
Thank you, Consular. Consul O'Hara.
Likewise.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Memhard.
It appears to me that the proponent has adequately addressed the adequacy of the utilities on the site.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Cox.
What he said.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Gilman.
I'll be brief. Um, I'd just like to add that the applicant proposes improvement to the adjacent sidewalks with ADA compliance.
Thank you, Consular, and I'd just like to echo, uh, the councilors. Um, I, I think the fire suppression, the city utilities and, uh, the ADA compliant is, uh, is going to be a, a, a benefit to the neighborhood. Consul Gilman.
Thank you. The fourth factor is neighborhood character.
Consul Pat.
I would just say that I would, um, like to, uh, leave that commentary more to councilors Nolan and O'Hara, uh, that have lived there all their lives.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Holmgren.
Uh, echoing Consul McCarthy, um, aging in place certainly belongs in neighborhood character as well, uh, and social structure. So I will say, making sure that the building is ADA, uh, compliant, uh, and the addition of elevators, as I had said at a P and D meeting last year, um, definitely, uh, applies to standard D. Um, and hopefully, um, if all goes well with the Magnolia House of Pizza, the re-establishment of some, um, traditions in the neighborhood, uh, will occur.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Nolan.
On the neighborhood character, if we look around the whole entire neighborhood, not to mention just the, the examples that we put up there, there's so many large buildings in the area. The building that was there before is going to be relatively the same height. I don't see too much change in the neighborhood, other than the fact that we're going to be filling a void of something that's been missing for a long time. Um, we're blessed with so many large buildings in Magnolia, different living situations, some, some larger apartments, buildings right closer than people might even think. Um, I, I, I think it's going to fit and I think the social structure and the criteria is everything is all going to be met with us.
Thank you, Consular. Consul McCarthy.
I'd just like to say that, um, after looking at Exhibit A that was presented to, Exhibit Seven that was presented to us, um, of all the non-conforming, uh, budding properties and properties in the area, I think that this, um, new building will blend into an already diverse, uh, setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consul O'Hara.
Um, again, growing up in the neighborhood, um, the, the size of the, what was there to what is being proposed and the number of units, um, I don't think in fairness, I can say that it is ev- it is even relatively close to fitting what was there. So, uh, I, I, I just can't support the fact that, I can't put blinders on in some way, say that, you know, you had two units and six units, it's the same character. Again, I, I grew up there. There's some of the, you know, some of you about the same age, um, we're not talking apples and apples. We're talking two units to six units in a restaurant. So, um, it, it definitely isn't in, in place with what was there or the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the neighborhood of the square, um, it's, it's going to be a building which is much larger than anything in, in that immediate area. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Memhard.
This is a mixed neighborhood business district. We have certain established residences which have abundant green space around them. We also have businesses that have no off-street parking. There's been a trade-off here to take a backyard that was undeveloped and make it into parking for off-street access for the uses of this parcel. I think that makes sense. Uh, I don't think we're pushing the limits here too much. It's, it is a mixed neighborhood business district, businesses and residences, and it's a balance.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Cox.
I, there, I mean, there's no way around it. This is definitely a bigger unit, um, than what was there before, but I don't think based on the other buildings, um, and the listing that we received regarding the non-conforming lots, that this is going to be anything more than, um, another non-conforming lot. So, uh, there was a lot of comment about, um, things couldn't be built, what was built in the seventies couldn't be built today. And that's part of our process is to go through and have, um, the ability to ask for relief and that is what this applicant did and that's what a lot of our city properties do because we are, most of them are non-conforming.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Gilman.
I was impressed with seeing that the roof had changed. So instead of it being a flat roof, it became, um, more consistent to how the neighborhood looked, so I thought that that was positive. And I also just want to note that, um, even though it's two units to six units, um, it really is six bedrooms to ten bedrooms. So, the, the, um, the structural density of the amount of units that are there are not as broad as two units to six units. Don't want to argue with Consul, um, O'Hara, but I just wanted to, to mention that. Um, I thought that was important.
Thank you. Um, the neighborhood character, um, I just want to acknowledge that at this day and age, you can drive around, you know, in Beverly, they're erecting duplexes downtown in their cookie cutters like they have up in Lindfield Marketplace and like they have all over the place. They're just a box with a flat roof. Um, so I think the, the characteristics of the building is going to blend very well. Um, the architect did a really good job on designing this building to kind of fit into the neighborhood. Um, so that's my take on this. So, Consul Gilman.
Thank you. Number five, qualities of natural environment.
Sorry, uh, Consul Pat.
Okay. Um, Stinky Beach. Um, I guess that's the environment and, uh, I'm not sure, again, not having lived there, uh, I'm not sure. Um, uh, my understanding always was that the, the smell was rarely coming from the, uh, the seaweed, but, um, I, I, I'm not the, uh, decider of that. Um, I think there is a, um, uh, a, a great improvement, uh, to the, um, all of the systems, not only the septic system, the stormwater system, et cetera. So I think that's only going to be a plus. Again, the total number of, um, persons or, um, people using the facilities is not a large increase and I think the new, um, all the new, uh, systems that are being proposed, uh, will be a plus for the environment.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Holmgren.
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Consul Nolan.
I too feel all, with all the modern drainage and septic issues, it's going to be better for the natural environment and it's going to help retain everything in the property better than it does now.
Thank you, Consular. Consul McCarthy.
I would just echo, uh, Consul Nolan, Consul Pat, that the, uh, the new installation of a Title V system, um, and the, uh, onsite drainage system certainly is a protection for the environment in that area.
Thank you. Consul O'Hara.
Um, we live on a rock here in Gloucester. You dig down, you hit rock. Uh, whether you have a new leaching field or an old leaching field, law of physics, you pull liquid into the ground, it goes down. In Gloucester, it's that rock. Um, Consul Pat, and I think Consul LeBlanc has referenced, uh, Magnolia Beach as Stinky Beach. I can tell you, living here fifty-eight years and not to reference my age, but that beach has stunk for many, many, many years. Hasn't smelled recently in the recent years. Can't attribute that to a building that's no longer there, but, um, there is some, there could be some, um, relationship to that, so. I, I do have, I do have, um, some concerns that'll come back, but, you know, we, we have to live with our, our engineering plan that, uh, has been approved and, um, you know, we'll see if Stinky Beach comes back.
Thank you, Consular. Consul Memhard.
Stinky Beach notwithstanding, uh, I, I, I feel comfortable deferring to the review and the judgments of our Board of Health, uh, addressing the adequacy of the, uh, impact that this building is going to have on the neighborhood.
Thank you. Consul Cox.
Um, I can attest to the fact that over the last three years, it has smelled at the beach when I've gone to photograph the sunsets. So, I was always told it was from the algae, so I don't, I don't know, or...
Manchester.
Seaweed. Or we'll just blame Manchester. Um, I, I think, I think that there's been extensive steps taken to protect the natural environment, um, of the property and the surrounding area, um, to the new sewage disposal, the new stormwater disposal and, um, the fact that we're moving twelve cars off the streets into a parking lot is, um, huge.
Thank you. Consul Gilman.
Nothing to add.
All righty. Um, the septic and stormwater, this is a public service announcement. If anybody sees any raw sewage or any stormwater running down the street, I advise you to call, call the Board of Health, plain and simple. Um, there are laws against this. My parents live over, on Jones's River. They just had to put in a, a very, um, expanse, um, septic tank to not pollute things and the Board of Health goes over regularly and checks it. So, uh, I'm confident that they'll do the same thing with this moving forward. Um, so, once again, I said, if there's any, you see raw sewage, please notify the Board of Health immediately as a public safety hazard. Consul Gilman.
Thank you. And the final of the six is potential fiscal impact.
Consul Pat.
Fiscal impact. Taxes, whether that's real estate, meals tax, whatever, taxes, positive, employment with people and therefore all sorts of fiscal benefits. Simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Holmgren.
I agree with Consul Pat.
Consul Nolan.
Same here.
Consul McCarthy.
Same here.
Consul O'Hara.
I'm okay.
Consul Memhard.
Compared to an empty lot, which is there now with those concrete steps, uh, we're looking at, uh, a new restaurant, new services, new jobs, new taxes, new housing, an affordable unit and housing. It seems like a pretty clear fiscal gain for the community and the neighborhood.
Thank you. Consul Cox.
What he said.
Consul Gilman.
I don't like going after you.
Nothing to add.
Uh, I'm going to agree with my fellow councilors, um, on this. I don't think there's going to be any fiscal impact to the neighborhood, um, seeing that the surrounding areas have stores, shops, restaurants, um, churches and whatever else is in the neighborhood that we don't know about that's there. Um, I agree, there's not going to be any, um, fiscal impact on the neighborhood. Consul Gilman.
So, final area that I wanted to, um, have us discuss is a special permit allows for the decrease of two-dimensional requirements under GZO, section 3.2.2, footnote A, minimum open space per dwelling unit and minimal lot area per dwelling unit. The applicant has demonstrated through oral and written testimony and the city council finds that this proposal is in keeping with the structural density and neighborhood character. I'd like us all to discuss that factor.
Consul Pat.
I think the discussion has been had by, um, previous council, um, and I know we're starting, uh, afresh, um, here. Um, I think that, uh, it does fit within, um, the neighborhood character in the sense that when you look at the data, um, uh, that is, uh, in front of us for the entire neighborhood area, uh, in that, um, density, uh, I think this, um, works just fine.
Thank you. Consul Holmgren.
I believe we have vetted this aspect of the, uh, special council permit application, uh, for me to be comfortable voting for it as is.
Thank you. Consul Nolan.
I believe that we've, we've, we've been through the, the density requirements through all the committee meetings and we've, we've looked at it and we've heard explanations from the planning board and the planning department and, um, totally comfortable with the changes to this.
Thank you. Consul McCarthy.
Again, just on my, um, tour with Consul Nolan yesterday, that it's, it's very similar to a lot of the, uh, housing apartment buildings in the area. Um, and we are sacrificing maybe some open space for parking, but it seems to be, um, that the parking is more of a requirement than the open space for this type of unit.
Thank you. Consul O'Hara.
Um, I'm concerned with the, the, um, the zoning. Uh, I guess I have to come to the reality. We have zoning regulations on our books that we're supposed to adhere to. Um, they were created whether by prior council, um, clearly prior councils, but eventually someplace along the way, uh, those were put there for a reason. This, this project was vetted by, um, prior boards years ago and, um, didn't come out favorably. Um, here we are reinventing the wheel again. Uh, we clearly have become more dense as far as population, our city, and we continue to, um, just let things slide. And I, I, you know, when the visitors arrive in the summer and, uh, we have traffic all over creation and people continue to complain, um, who can we blame? You know, but the nine of us that sit here at this table that vote on these projects, uh, we have to take responsibility. We have to look at the rules of the road that are in place and those are the rules of the road that we have to follow. And to continue to turn a, a blind eye, uh, isn't responsible and we were voted by the people to do a job. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Consul Memhard.
I would just say that I do not believe that this proposed project is inconsistent or out of character with a mixed neighborhood business and residential district that is being built in. So I think that it's a, uh, appropriate and in-character development.
Consul Cox.
I think this project is vetted on its own merits. Um, I think it has done well. Um, I take umbrage with your reference to letting things slide. We do have a zoning ordinance and we do have a zoning ordinance relief system. Um, and I think we as councilors should be taking them on a case-by-case basis and addressing the pros and cons to each and every one. Um, I, you know what? I agree with Meredith on a couple of points that she made. This would not be in-character over in East Gloucester, but I think it is in-character in the place that it's being built and being proposed. Um, and I also challenge all the residents, whether... And I also challenge all the residents, whether this is your neighborhood or not. If you see some, some things that can be improved after this building is in place, reach out to a counselor. If you think that the speed limit needs to be changed, or that there needs to be a no parking area or such to accommodate this new building, reach out to your counselor. We're not going to know these things until after it's built, but I do believe that this structure is in character with the neighborhood, and it's done more than address some of the issues at hand. So I think the communication is key. You know what, if there's speeding, call the police department, call your counselor, stuff like that. We will address things as they come along, and we always do.
Thank you, Councilor Cox. Councilor Gilman?
So we spent a lot of time on the site visit, and also when we went back to P and D, talking about revision or Appendix 7A revision 3. And one of the things that we learned on this is that about 70, 75% of all these different properties have similar, larger size house per the lot or less open space per the lot. And those are the two matters of structural density that we're looking at right now in this permit. So based on those, those site visits and the conversations, I feel that we are definitely applying the requisite criteria for GZO Section 3.2.2A for both minimum open space per dwelling unit and minimum lot area per dwelling unit.
Thank you, and I would like to echo Councilor Gilman and Councilor Cox. Those were excellent points. I feel the same. So, great job.
So I would like to amend our motion by summarizing what we've just discussed. I move to amend special council permit 2019-008 by adding and inserting "after," signed by Ryan McShirr, R.A. This special permit meets the requisite criteria of GZO Section 2.3.1 for multi-family project of six units. The standards to be applied as required by GZO Section 1.8.3 for the proposed use of the property located at 35 Fuller Street will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. The allowance of the proposed use by the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district, or the city to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects of said use of highlighted, highlighted in these six factors, including, I'm going to summarize what we just discussed, social, economic, or community need. The project will provide increased housing opportunities for Gloucester, including a one-bedroom deed-restricted affordable housing unit in perpetuity, an elevator, and allow for the potential re-establishment of a popular commercial business in Magnolia Square. Traffic flow and safety. The proposal provides for off-site parking for 11 to 12 cars with a required nine for the proposed residential use, and reduces the ground floor use to one commercial business unit in the building as restaurant use with limited seating to minimize the intensity of use. Next, adequacy of utilities and public services. The proposed use is predominantly served by private utilities and features a new onsite wastewater system approved by the Board of Health, a stormwater management system approved by the planning board, and the proposed building will have a fire suppression sprinkler system. There is adequate public water supply, and the applicant proposes improvement to the adjacent sidewalks with ADA compliance. Number four, neighborhood character. This project has been designed to blend in with the mixed use and diverse character of Magnolia Square. Number five, qualities of natural environment. This project will be improved with the new and modern systems, including an onsite drainage system. Finally, potential fiscal impact. This project will see an increase to the real estate tax base, potential meals taxes, and employment opportunities with a new commercial use. This special permit allows for the decrease of two-dimensional requirements under GZO Section 3.2.2, footnote A, minimum open space per dwelling unit and minimum lot area per dwelling unit. The applicant has demonstrated through oral and written testimony, and the city council finds that this proposal is in keeping with the structural density and neighborhood character, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to summarize by saying that the summary of our discussion tonight focuses on all the requisite criteria of the special council permit in front of us, and this amendment captures the highlights of our determinations and findings.
Thank you, Councilor Gilman. Does everybody know what we're voting on? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? There you have it. All righty. So this was a process, and we took our time making sure that this was followed by the letter of the law. So we have a motion on the table, and we have a few amendments to this motion to vote on this evening. This is going to be a roll call vote. So does everybody understand what we're voting for with the amendments? All righty. Madam Clerk, can I have the roll call vote, please?
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
No.
And Councilor Pat?
Yes.
And Councilor Cox?
Yes.
The city council motion to grant special city council permit 2019-008 for Fuller Street number 35 passes on a vote of nine, I mean, sorry, eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next order of business?
The next order of business is the update of the housing production plan by Council Representative.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a quick two-minute recess to get everybody out of All righty, we're, we are back in session. Councilor Holmgren, report on the, the housing production plan.
Thank you. We have not met in several months because everybody's been busy, our consultant has been busy. So however, that being said, the planning board has been meeting in a subcommittee and putting forward, well, they will be putting forward their recommendations for accessory dwelling units and dimensional standards for us at the council at some point. They'll probably be meeting later again this month, and then we, as a working group, will likely get together pretty soon, and the intent is to move these pieces forward to the full planning board and then to the city council. And next, we're going to be focusing on downtown zoning, so stay tuned for that, and thank you.
All righty, thank you, Jen. Next order of business?
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Let's start with Councilor Pat.
None at the moment.
Councilor Holmgren?
I got nothing. Happy New Year.
You too. Councilor Nolan?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Councilor McCarthy?
None.
Councilor O'Hara?
We don't lose focus on the snow plowing of our sidewalks, particularly for the handicap. Also, that, as I requested, that we, we get together with the school committee and have a joint meeting as soon as possible to discuss many issues associated with our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Memhard?
I'd like to thank the administration for a really slam dunk inauguration and start to the year with the guest speakers that we had in attendance and the musical lineup and all the rest. It was a really uplifting start for Gloucester and our new council term, so thank you all.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Not a request to the mayor, but something that I think probably could have been addressed had I thought about it at the workshop. But when we get emails to our counselor email addresses, if it's sent to me personally, I will forward it to the clerk's office, but if it's sent to the counselor's email, I think it should be up to the president or vice president to forward them to the clerk's office if she's not already on the email. I think all of us forwarding the emails to Grace or Joanne is just maddening, especially with the level of emails we received over the last three days. So I think there should be a system. I'm always worried that it's not being forwarded, so if we all agree that this would be the new system, I think that's super important. Again, if it's sent to you personally, please forward it to the clerk's office, but other than that, I think it's a responsibility of the president or vice president to get, to delegate that or to do it themselves.
I nominate Councilor Gilman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilor Gilman?
So I wanted to thank Council President LeBlanc for the very productive governance meeting that we had on Saturday. I thought you did a great job. I thought the dialogue was awesome. And I also wanted to just mention to councilors, with the MMA conference coming up, take a look at your material and really take a look at some of the best practices.
There's only three of us going.
But, but everybody has all the material, and there's some really good information, both from 2019 best practices and 2020, that focuses on housing production plans. There's one on civility that is much more expansive, expanded than what we currently have. So I think that those are always good things for us to look at, because we might be able to really take our council to the next level of doing some real progressive things in our city. So I just wanted to mention that, and thank you for sticking with this lengthy process tonight, and I appreciate that, so, and welcome to the, to new councilors.
Mr. President, you know, the question was asked if we had requests of the mayor. I mean, I did have some other comments to make among ourselves, so.
We'll do that at the next meeting. On that note, I do want to put in a request for Councilor Pat. I haven't reached out to him yet. There is a 15-minute parking sign directly across the street from the Cafe Cecilia or Shorten Main that needs to be lowered. I parked there the other day, and it was just so far up, I didn't even know it was, it was there until. It needs to, I know. On that note, I think we did a great job tonight. Welcome, new councilors. Welcome back, old councilors, onward and upward. So great, great debate tonight, and let's keep this moving. Thank you very much. Meeting, motion to adjourn? We adjourn. Thank you.